Support tonight to remain seated and quiet unless you're called on. This is a work session, not a council meeting. And we're going to roll downhill tonight. We have Mayor's Awards, number one. We will be having some of those, too. Proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. Steve Freyvert will be taking care of that. It's good to see you, my friend. It's good to see your better half as well.
(laughing).
Number three is a public hearing. Consideration of a sale of property locally known as 232 South Sixth Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Tismen?
It's a property the city acquired through owner-deed. It was a property that had been abandoned and deteriorating to a point of being placeted, abandoned, unsafe. Needs quite a bit of work. The owner decided to deed it to the city. It is one we have had an offer on for purchase. It is just some details on it. Eighteen seventy-one home, two-story brick, about twenty-two hundred square feet, four-bedroom, one bath, eighty-by-one-hundred-and-seventeen-foot lot. The porches and deck need a lot of repair, a lot of the interior, electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, junk and nuisance vehicles to be cleaned out. HVAC is in poor condition, windows, doors. Pretty much a complete rehab work on this. So have had, like I said, one offer for our bid on the property. This would be an auction-type sale.
Questions?
I have none.
Okay, good. Doing what we need to do. Number five, I'm sorry, number four. Consideration of a sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Tismen?
This is one that we previously sold. The purchaser did not follow through on the timelines, nearly over a year and a half past the original deadline, our original purchase date. Still not completed any substantial work on the property. Notice was sent to that purchaser that we would be, per the conditions of the sale that are on all the sale processes, that we would be reselling the property. Just a reminder, for conditions of sale, we state work shall be started within or initiated within sixty days and completed within one-hundred-and-eighty days. Extension of one-hundred-and-eighty days may be granted if progress is made. There was no progress on this property. They were still past that one-hundred-and-eighty-day timeframe, probably a year past that timeframe. So there was plenty of time to do that. It wasn't when we were hard and fast on the timeframe. They're well past that and still had not accomplished any significant work, any electrical or plumbing upgrades. Had done, I think, just gotten in the home and done a little minor clear-out, but that's about it. One where our goals with these are to get them back on the tax rolls, get them occupied, get them up and rehabbed in hopefully a timely manner. That year timeframe generally accomplishes that, but this is about over a year and a half past that. So it is one that we would bring back to council for resale.
Just got a quick one. Do you think we have an issue with resales? And are we making sure that we have our base that has to be put down, that we're covering ourselves on that? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, we do not transfer deed on the properties based on this issue that wanting to transfer deed and then having it sit empty and trying to go after it again. The conditions are very clear in our resolution approved by council, and they are given to the purchasers on the property. And I guess it's essentially a clawback that if work isn't done that we've done with other properties, that we have the right to resell it.
What did it sell for last time?
Eighteen hundred dollars.
You guys good?
Does this often happen when somebody buys a property from us and then they fail to meet the conditions?
Not typically. We, yeah, we've had one other ones where the owner wasn't going to meet the timeline. They asked us to resell it based on that. We had already, within a month of the timeframe, they hadn't started any work and basically said, "We're not going to do anything. Go ahead." But this is the second one where they've done that, where they, I guess, haven't met the timeframe. And we've, like I said, exceeded the timeframes given in the resolution by at least six months. We're well past that date.
Right. This wasn't the same person?
The previous sale, since it was through council, was Arthur Gordon.
And that, it wasn't him on this one?
It's Arthur Gordon on this one.
The other one was another individual. That was an empty lot for a new build.
Okay. We're good?
Yes.
Right on. Number five.
Just a note on that. I did send a notice in March, in a march, to that individual stating that you have failed to meet the timeframe. And we did have some verbal communication through our department ahead of that time as well. So they have been notified and...
Okay.
Are we good?
Yes.
Number five. Consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter 122, peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants, and creating a new Chapter 122, peddlers, solicitors, mobile food vendors, and transient merchants. First reading on that one. Mr. T.
This is a change. These applications are handled through the city clerk's office. A few different departments sign off on applications, a lot of the peddlers. We have had more food vendors, mobile food vendors in the community, and our code didn't quite specify those to the extent we felt comfortable with. They did fall under the peddlers, but we've had more requests for mobile food vendors than anything in the last couple of years. So we wanted to make sure those were included as far as definitions and how those are handled. Part of it is that we can have one application on a yearly basis for those mobile food vendors and then just submit a new site plan each time instead of having to go through the whole application every time. Oftentimes, we get two, three, four applications from one mobile food vendor for two or three, four different sites within a week or a month timeframe. And so they're having to process the entire application every time, and so is staff. And so this allows that one application for those vendors, full application on a yearly basis, and then the site plan for each additional space beyond that. So trying to make that process a little more streamlined for them and for staff.
This is one of the three topics that the Planning and Zoning Commission took on for the year after having had a combined meeting and kind of discussing what they wanted to see happen for priorities for this upcoming year. I know you reviewed several different communities' policies, and I assume that this is based off of taking a look at some of those and bringing forward a recommendation.
Yeah, and this went through the planning commission. They made the recommendation to approve this as well. Charlie's done a lot of backwork on this as far as looking at other communities and bringing it through the process.
Chuck's done a good job. Council?
Good so far?
All right. Then we're good with peddlers. Number six. Consideration of fiscal year 2017, eighteen budget amendment number one. Stephanie?
Sure. So in your packet is what was published in the paper last week as required. Basically, I also had put a recap of what the increases are going to be. Revenues, these are items that, again, weren't in our budget to begin with. The SAFER grant, we hadn't been awarded it when we approved the FY18 budget. Ambulance revenues are up a hundred thousand from what we budgeted. Bond proceeds, we had some budgeted but not quite enough to cover what we just got done closing with. And then we are doing just miscellaneous transfers, and that's part of, you'll see the transfer number for revenues and expenses equal it has to. But those are just projects that we're transferring money back and forth that weren't actually in the budget either. So on the expenditure side, you'll see we're increasing the public safety function. That's how we budget is by function. So fire and police are both being increased. Fire, of course, is the SAFER grant. Police, there are some building expenses, the U.S. Bank Building, overtime, and then a vehicle replacement. On public works, there's some building expenses that came through and then more expenses that happened at the depot. General government, that includes the city hall repairs and the increase in insurance. Debt service fees, those are the bond fees associated with the bond that we just closed on. Culture and rec, small amount, is increasing parks and forestry. Most of that is trust accounts. The trust accounts are monies that we already have on hand, but as we, you know, we put a number in there that we think they're going to spend with the money they have on hand, and then as the year goes through, we increase it. So that is what, the majority of that culture and rec. And then the business-type amounts, obviously, we've had some sewer repairs and sewer things that have happened, so we're increasing that. Workers' comp has been higher this year, so we're increasing that. So basically, you can see there's a shortfall of about one million. A lot of like the amounts in the sewer, those are, again, cash on hand. It's not like we're spending more than we have. It's cash we already have on hand. We're just increasing the expenditures because we're spending them right now. Does anybody have any questions on the budget amendment?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Part of what Stephanie does, too, with this, she's trying to have this estimated on the high side. We do have to make sure that we, to the extent possible, that we notify the public ahead of time prior to having an expense occur. And so we're making, we want to make sure that any unforeseen thing that might come up, it's only two months, but there could be something that does come up that you have a little bit of cushion built into these published numbers.
She's just a good job with that. All right. Number seven, guys. Motion for preliminary adoption, and ladies, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance creating Chapter 163A, Junk Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tismen?
No changes from the previous reading on this. This section is currently contained within Chapter 163, Environmental Nuisance. This change to bring this into its own section of code is to better lay out the abatement process, which wasn't clearly defined under the Nuisance Code for junk vehicles, as far as notifying and writing the owner of the property or owner of the vehicle if known, and then what defines a junk vehicle, inoperable vehicle, and then how the process of abatement would work with that. As I mentioned, this is currently under the existing code, but it just isn't well-defined in that section, and it's kind of lumped in with tall grass and weeds and trash as far as what our abatement is, and this better defines that process and lays it out a little more clear for staff and for property owners.
There does seem to be a little bit of confusion about illegal parking versus junk vehicles. And so that's, we really need people to focus in on that because they're two different issues.
I have a couple of photos here, and these are probably, I don't know if they make it clear, but vehicles that were junk vehicles are ones, this one was in an accident, is not operable. Similar to some of these are not currently licensed or tagged. They don't have current license plate or current tag on the property. Storage of a, I know this is very hard to see, trailer there that's filled with junk that's sunk into the ground. Those are ones that are junk or inoperable vehicles. A lot of these come to our attention as well because they are illegally parked. You see most of these on grass surfaces, especially this one here is very clear. Grass surface is a zoning code issue. That falls under the zoning code where they're parking. How the actual condition of the vehicle, whether it's inoperable or junk, it falls under this section of code.
Did you want to add anything to that, James?
Nope.
Okay. How many kids do you have that can drive?
How well.
We'll talk about the rest of that after the meeting. All right, you guys good?
Yes.
I'd imagine we're going to have some conversation about that, but I don't know what there is to be able to argue on it. Let's go to number eight. Motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 163, Environmental Nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. Anything new on that? Mr. Tismen?
No changes since the previous reading where a few amendments were entertained as far as notice by publication shall require posting or other additional notice by the code official. Right-of-entry requires that the property be, have nuisance conditions or other unsafe conditions in order to do that, but it still does not authorize us to enter without permission. Would still have to get a warrant if the owner denies it for whatever reason. And then the other minor change, just mulch, compost, and clippings when those are and are not a nuisance. So otherwise, no other changes.
Council, you guys good?
Good.
I just want to stress in my two seconds, I don't like it. I'll wait for the meeting to grandstand. Come on, Mr. Matt. Next is number nine. Motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Burlington, by creating a new Chapter 100, Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility. Mr. Matt?
We will just simply review the same PowerPoint that I've given the last several meetings, but just want to quickly go over it so it's not a shock once people receive bills in July. Just to rehash, we currently have a chapter written creating Stormwater Utility. It's fairly generalized. The replacement ordinance is a model ordinance taken from the Iowa Municipal Association. And this is, our rates currently set by resolution annually, we actually set this back in March, April, to be able to have the residential rates set up for billing that actually went out, I think, in May. As you'll notice, the $2.50, that resolution contained a rate that said $2.58 for July 1st. This PowerPoint was made prior to, and so the resolution that we just made, but this gives you an idea of what the rate structure has been over the last several years. Residential has been separated into two categories, and then industrial and commercial have had four different blocks of impervious surface. If you hit the next slide for me. And so the rate structure that we plan to go through with this ordinance is the ERU rate for commercial and industrial. It's based on impervious surface. Impervious surface is surface that doesn't allow rainwater to soak through, so sidewalks, rooftops. And the ERU rate is established by one-hundred-and-fifty residential homes finding the average impervious surface. And so the ERU square footage is 3,360 square foot. The rate of the ERU is $2.58. And so every residential home will be charged $2.58, no different than what the current resolution that we've had in place would have been applied as of July 1.
Can you confirm? Oh, go ahead.
Residences won't see any change. Single-family residential will not see any change from what they would have been underneath the current resolution.
But from where they are right now, they'll see a change?
Three percent increase or eight cents. If you go to the next slide for me. So this is kind of a breakdown of the ERU and the number of properties and kind of the average bill that they'll see. If you hit the next slide. This is kind of more of a cost comparison on what commercial, industrial, multifamily will see as cost changes. There are a vast number of properties that are under that 10,000-square-foot threshold, so some of them will, we'll actually see, some of them will see a decrease in what their bill is, but there are some larger properties that have large paving and rooftops that will see a fairly good increase.
Would you say that most communities are doing this now?
ERU rate is something that has taken across the state. There are, I don't know how many communities in the state of Iowa have it, but it's a trend that people are going to. ERU methodology is more equitable to the ratepayers as far as people that are contributing stormwater to the overall stormwater network and then the drainage basin that it serves.
It's not only across the state. This is a national thing. And there have been something, the reason that you see this format used typically is it's one that's been legally defensible in court cases on a national basis. The residential side hasn't been the area that's been the largest concern over time with different rate structures. It's been the commercial-industrial just because of the nature of the size components. And this is one that this structure is, been tried and tested in the courts on a national basis. So you do see a lot of places moving more towards this.
I was just wanting to hear about the, if it was happening on a national basis, just because, again, this is going to, business is going to look at this as they look at communities, just to see how that is.
And then this is just a sample of what the GIS overview and analysis was done by Beanstrick and Kim. So it kind of shows some rates of what people will see and then how they calculate impervious surface. So at the end of the day, we will have a GIS database that has all of these things calculated. So if there are issues with what people think is impervious surface versus what isn't, we'll have the ability to in-house look at that, alter it, and then come to a conclusion whether or not it's impervious.
One note on that, they just came out with the 2018 GIS just last week, so we have very current GIS data from this spring.
Something that will be on the agenda as well next week, and it should have been on for today, for you to take a look at, but it's a resolution establishing the residential ERU rate at that $2.58. As Nick mentioned, we established that $2.58 rate in March, beginning of April, but it was based on the ordinance as currently written. We need to get one then that establishes that same rate under the new ordinance structure. So it'll be the same thing that we've already passed, but just based off of the current wording.
When we have them then?
We'll do that next meeting. It'll be an item that would be after you pass on final reading.
Okay.
And some of the language that that ordinance has is that the ERU rate, the dollar figure that the ERU is based on will be something done annually by council, but the rest of the formulas of how commercial, industrial are all calculated is language within the ordinance. So that's something that will have to change.
Council?
Thank you, sir.
Number 10. Resolution awarding contract for the 2018 HMA overlay projects. Stay where you're at. Mr. Matt?
Well, we had bid openings last Tuesday for the HMA and then Seal Coat. The engineer's estimate was at $525,000. We did not get as good of bids this year, the lowest being $579. This is something that we are paying for out of the 1.4, the GEO-bond-funded roads. Jim and I have talked about some of the funding. Typically, we do a larger project. We are planning on doing some concrete. We still plan to do some other concrete work, but we will hopefully try and be able to add some asphalt roads onto this as the project goes along. Something else that the 1.4 potentially will be covering is any of the overruns on Agency Street East. So my recommendation is to award bid for WL Miller.
Council, we good?
Yep. Yes.
Stay where you're at. And act number 11. Resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Seal Coat Street Reconstruction.
This unfortunately had one bidder and also was over significantly higher than last year's bid-it-out project. The estimated work for this was $330,000. Came in at $425,000. In the resolution, you see a reduced dollar figure as far as an award. That award takes out Adams, Smith, and Etna. After talking with Jim, we will change that resolution, and I will recommend full award. We had some little, our bids came in under last year, and so we have a little bit of fund balance that we could carry the full project as planned or as bid.
Enough fund balance to cover all of that?
Yeah, we came in, into the current fiscal year, we came in with $250,000. This year's project is probably about a wash between, by the time we get engineering costs into it, but, so we should have about that same $250,000 going into July 1. And that's kind of the money that we're using for this summer's project, even though we're starting it yet this year. It's based off of money that's in FY19's budget. So we do have the ability to be over in this area.
Well, let's finish this year like we did last.
So my recommendation will be changed, and the resolution will say to award at the $425,000 rather than the $348.
Yeah, we just won't have as much carryover going into the following year, but that's okay.
Why are you not getting the bid participation?
I have a couple of theories on that. One, we're doing it later in the year than what we traditionally have done. I would prefer to bid projects in January, February, March. We're bidding things in May. By now, a lot of people have their planned projects already booked out, so there's not as much willingness to compete, I guess, for that bid. Seal Coat, we've traditionally only had two bidders on that. I don't know what the other contractor has got, maybe a full docket of things to do.
Is that Miller?
Miller excavating traditionally bids on Seal Coat. WL Miller has done Seal Coat for us for the last three or four years.
But cycles, each cycle is different. Agency Street East came in over budget.
West was underneath by quite a bit.
But Agency Street West, a project done last year. I think all of our street projects last year were under budget, and the year before they were all under budget. This year, they're all coming in over budget.
I'm going to ask the question, does it make sense to hold off on this and put it on the plate for next year to see if we get a better bid result?
I get leery. If you'd go to the next slide, I have a map of, there's a significant road quantity in this to be redone. I know some of the streets that are in pretty poor condition right now. I just worry about, and even waiting till next, you know, next, even doing it like this fall or something in anticipation for next spring, doesn't necessarily guarantee you better pricing either. It might backfire and might cost us an extra $50,000 or $100,000. So it's in front of us. We know what that bid is. I just, I would prefer to try and do that work now. In theory, could you go out and get a better price? Maybe, but we know what this is right now in front of us, so.
And the reason that we were late was because the bond proceeds weren't in yet, right?
No. We've had, we've had bigger projects, I guess, being worked on in the timeframe to get this stuff designed. That's the best way I could put it.
When you're bidding out multiple projects, I mean, some of them were done on the timeframe that meets more competitive bidding prices, but again, as Agency Street East, it was done earlier in the cycle, and it still was over budget, so, I mean.
And Agency Street West last year was bid in June.
And it was under budget, so.
Correct.
You're just, you're making some guesses as to, you generally are going to have a better luck earlier on, but you don't.
And there's some changes in the landscape of construction, you know. Cessford just sold to Norris, the asphalt plant, so that, that changes some things. You know, there's always quarry type, you know, who's got the right material and whatnot, but it's a guessing game on when you're going to get the best pricing. I mean, the best, to me, the best plan is to always go out in January, February, March, and try and get people when they're early in their schedule of trying to fill things out, but.
Sounds good to me. You guys good?
Yep.
So are you all right with me changing that resolution for full award?
Everybody's good?
I'm fine with that. The money's there.
Okay. Number 12. Resolution of supporting financial commitment for the Main Street program in the City of Burlington, Iowa.
I think we'll let Steve go ahead and make a presentation on this. You know this better than I do, but in the past, and I gave you, put at your spot a summary of some of the changes from the previous agreement, but in the past, we've had, what, two-year agreements that are between the city, downtown partners working with us for the Main Street program, and then the state. This is an 18-month agreement, pretty much the same language, but you've got to note there what the summary of changes are. And then it'll be transitioning over to one-year agreements in the future.
Yeah, so that would be starting January in 2020, 12-month agreements.
So would you kind of highlight what it is that this agreement is about and what the state is moving forward and doing differently than they've done in the past?
Yeah, it's no, not really any big changes. This is, as Jim said, it's a three-way agreement. The city agrees to provide support, material, and some financial support for the Main Street program. Downtown Partners agrees to do its work. IDA agrees to provide some training, workshops, and I don't think it mentions grant opportunities, but that is something that we've seen in the past. So in the past, this has been done every two years this year since they're doing a transition. It would be effective July 1st of this year through the end of 2019.
What is Main Street program? That's part of what this goes on. What is that and what's the benefit and what role have you played in working with us?
Awesome question. I was going to address that in my report in a little bit, if that's okay. I was gonna address that in my report in a little bit, if that's okay.
They bring party to downtown Burlington, that's what they do.
What kind of financial support?
It does not require any particular dollar amount. In the past, since 2005, the city's financial support of Downtown Partners has been 15,000 a year.
That gets budgeted in Eric's. And I can't think which one, planning and zoning? So it's been a portion of his budget on an ongoing basis since then. If you were to look comparatively with other communities of our size, would that be on the low end or the high end?
Very much on the low end. I think there's about six or eight comparable communities between, say, 25,000 up to 60,000 in population, and we're about the bottom of that in terms of financial support per capita for the Main Street program.
Thanks for clarifying that, because we're not at the bottom, just on the.
We're the top of a lot of things.
That's right. Counsel, do you guys have questions for Mr. Freiber? Any problems with the agreement?
Steve, I don't think you get enough credit. You're doing a great job. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Takes a lot of us working together. I think if you look at downtown over the last 10, 15 years, there's been a significant transformation, so a lot of that credit goes to you and your group. Thank you.
Actually, it goes to Rhonda. She's gotta prop this guy.
She brought us here, so.
She feeds him, she feeds him a machine.
That's right. Yeah.
All right, so I will point out the changes that were listed on here, and you can go over a little bit more about what Main Street accreditation and how that program works during your regular presentation later. This is separating out parties for signature. I don't think you had a signature line on it before. It was us and DPI on one side and the state on another. This now puts it into the three entities all signing off. It talks about their need for accreditation with the Main Street program. It's been something that you've had to do on every third year.
Actually, every year, and we did, we were reaccredited for this past year, so.
So is it changing it to every other year then now?
No, they really transitioned that process too. It used to be a lot of paperwork, a lot of meetings and so forth. It's kind of the point where Main Street reaccreditation is more of a self-guided process, but we still have to meet their 10 points to get reaccreditation.
That's at the state level, isn't it?
Yeah, it's actually to be a nationally accredited Main Street program, but it's administered through Main Street Iowa.
And I think that's basically that and the change in transition for the time is the big things for what's been changed on it.
Yeah, the Downtown Partners Board meets tomorrow morning, and will be considering the resolution of support for this agreement as well, and so presuming that goes through, I'll have our board chair, Janine Glover, sign three copies of that, get those to the city for their signature as well.
And you go through a review with the state Thursday?
Yes, indeed. Our annual program visit is this Thursday, yeah.
So they'll be doing a review of how they've done with the goals and priorities that they set out, the work plan, and everything else that goes along, to see if they are truly performing at a level that they feel is satisfactory for the Main Street program.
Yeah, meeting with city staff, with the Downtown Partners Board and committee chairs, Jason Hutchison, so it's generally a program visit. I really look forward to getting their take on how they think we're doing and where they see some need for improvement.
Sounds good. You guys good?
Yes.
All right. And Steve, you don't get enough credit. Your wife is great. Anyways, I love to give it to them every time I get a chance. It's lovely. Let's go to consent agenda. Number one is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. No problems there, guys?
No, I read that one.
Number two is resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the 2018 Eighth Street emergency sewer repair. Mr. Mann?
This project was something that was initiated this winter-spring off of South Eighth Street, the backside of Kemper, True Value, and the Family Dollar. We had a sewer leak. I have some pictures up on the slideshow that'll kind of show what we had to deal with. And we had snow, so who knows when that was? Actually, no, I don't know. It was in March.
Could have been June.
It could have been June. We had, if you go to the next slide, we had several photos of the inside. We kind of knew that there was some damage down the line, but we didn't know to the extent and how far it was. If you'd hit the next one. We had some pretty massive excavation there, because there's a pretty height, pretty big height differential between the parking lot and the bottom side of the hill, and the line happened to be right in the cross slope of that, so it's fairly difficult to get to. We did an emergency bidding exercise that we've done in the past, and the reason why it's an emergency is because we were discharging raw sewage into the public, and the DNR needed us to have an answer quick. So if you go to the money, you can see at the 90, we had original contracts signed with Four Seasons at $90,000. In conversation, we had a change order that is then reflected in the quantity adjustment before some new piping. That was in the 30 to 40,000 bracket. As we excavated, we found a lot of fill material that's not able to go back into the hillside slope, so that's why you see the $140,000 in quantity adjustment.
So did they have to bring in dirt?
Had to bring in clay to be able to get, to hold that slope. The fill material that they had wouldn't have held that slope. I don't know the ratio that that slope is at, but it was, it's an allowable slope type, that dirt would have not have held.
Yeah, we would've just been fighting retention.
Correct.
Okay.
And so $244,000 for a finished product is not something you want to deal with on a regular basis, but there's a big gap between the original and the end product, but a lot of that was quantity adjustment, because we didn't know what we were getting into as far as dirt. The rest of it was change order because of, there's two sections of pipe where we knew we had some issue, and then the end up being that the middle section of pipe was bad as well. So we talked about this, about.
Everybody knew this was gonna be ugly going in. It was just how ugly was it gonna be?
You said it, by the way. I will say, you said it.
So the final pay is $21,198 to Four Seasons, and then there's releasing of retentions at $12,000. So I can answer any questions on this. You know, the state law provides for us to do the emergency type. We had a written letter from another PE, another engineering firm, that said that the situation was an emergency type to get out the door and get fixed. We have complied with the DNR and have been in contact with them, and now this is, actually the bottom picture is seeding. We had a hydro seeded because of the severe slope in the spring that we were coming into with rain, but.
How much was that?
The hydro seeding? I wouldn't be able to tell you without looking at the pay request. It's line item down, but.
Is that the seeding and fertilizing?
Is it in your packet that way?
5,400 bucks. Is that right?
Yep.
Everybody's good?
Yep. It is what it is.
Right on. Okay, next we have number three, resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the Park View Care Facility asbestos abatement and demolition project. Mr. Tisland?
Yeah, this is for completion of the demolition of the care facility site. Has been completed and graded. Final payment of $30,000. Original contract was $380,000. There was a change order as well. The DNR had found additional asbestos behind some walls and behind some drywall within the building that was not originally found until you get into the demolition and find it, so that added just under 38,000 to the project. But with this as well, we are looking at a separate project for sewer line extension back to Shakkacon Drive, getting bids on that currently in order to have sewer access for the site, which will then be subdivided and sold as three separate buildable lots.
Are we selling those?
Yep.
Barry, cook some of that money. You guys have questions?
No.
All right, you're doing it, you're doing it. Number four, resolution approving professional service agreement with Beanster and Kim for construction inspection. Nick McGregor?
The resolution in front of you would approve the professional services agreement with Beanster and Kim for some assistance with some construction inspection. On any city project we have, we have construction inspection that we have to do. We take airs, we make sure, we take cores, we make sure that the slump is all right. We have a lot of different things that we do, and we do inspection on a construction project. Considering we have three DOT-funded projects this year, I asked for some assistance from engineering firms. I got a couple of numbers. My recommendation would be to approve this. It's $62 per hour, which is comparable to what we're paying our higher-end staff at engineering, but we, in the contract, it calls for 40 hours not to exceed for 17 weeks. We don't necessarily have to use them for 40 hours a week. It happens to be that the person that they will be loaning us is the same person that has been doing inspection on the flood wall. So he's a local person that would probably be able to just quickly drive across town to get to use our facilities. I think Jesse's plan for inspection is to use him quite heavily on Agency Street for inspection, considering Beanster and Kim did the plans on that project. But when we get into the HMA project for Mount Pleasant Street, because it's federal funds on that one, we will at times need to have three people on site, one at the plant, you know, two at grade, to take all the necessary testing that the DOT requires to accept the project. So it'll be a pretty intense inspection season, and I want to have this on hand so that way we can get through it and use him as much as we need or not as much. So my recommendation would be to move forward and approve the resolutions.
Questions?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Number five is resolution approving 2018 agreement for mutual aid fire protection between the city of Burlington, Iowa and the Bigsville Fire Department, Fire Protection District, Illinois. Ryan?
Anything you need to be explained, do you like? It's basically just a standard mutual aid agreement. They requested it from us. We didn't actually go to them at all.
Do we have one in place with them right now?
We have added in the past. The time is like a five-year timeframe is what they had in the past. It's run out. There's nobody else on the other side of the river that requests us to be done besides them, so.
Do you guys have any questions? You guys know the demo on that, so. Thank you for coming. You're looking good.
Jim, this is one of those deals where they recoup us for any costs above and beyond.
How do you bill each other, do you know?
The standard operation is basically that you don't, you're not really billing, per se, unless we're over there for an extended period of time, and then the chiefs work out the payment plan on what they're gonna actually do.
I don't think that this is part of the, we did a comprehensive one for more FEMA reimbursement standards, which would then set some base rates for reimbursement.
Exactly.
This is not part of that.
But like, if we drive four fire trucks over to Bigsville and they sit there for four hours, they provide us fuel, something?
Yeah, if they're gonna be there for an extended period of time, they're usually the standard customers. You fill the trucks up before you go home for you, or you go back, fill them, and you can then, they'll ask you to send them to the bill, so.
And is that in this agreement?
No. It's basically a standard, standard 28, we do the same thing with Danville.
This is just the agreement that we help each other, pretty much.
Yes, that's all it really is. There's no, there's no structure for payment listed in there, so.
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
I did want to mention back on Nick's, as he talked about engineering services, we have in-house staff that does a lot of the inspection work.
That's what we were gonna pay for, even.
With that inspection work, they can, we have a lot of projects going on, and they can't do it all. You did talk to several different firms about what they could potentially do to assist us with this.
Correct.
We also looked at the idea of hiring part-time staff or contracting out.
In all honesty, we had a hard time finding the staff that we have now, let alone going out and finding additional staff. Plus, you then have to have them for an ongoing basis unless you hire the part-time, and when you hire part-time, it's really hard to find somebody of the quality level that we would need for some of these projects. And what we do, I guess, I didn't talk about this at all, but for construction inspection, when we do, when we design and inspect projects, we bill back our engineering staff's hours towards the projects that they work on, and that is how we would pay for the staff's, the contracted staff's time that we have, we'll bill back towards that project. Since it's an hourly rate, I would assume we're doing it on the hourly rate basis.
So whether it's one of our engineers or one that we've contracted out.
It gets charged to the project.
Correct.
Well, and it works differently. If we do a, you know, for doing, say, Beanster and Kim here, their rate is gonna be, when it's charged out at that 62 bucks an hour, they're trying to, they're putting in a figure that they can cover their personnel costs and then build in an overhead, and we do that with our projects too. What theirs tends to work out for design and construction phase for services on a project, Beanster and Kim will typically come in at 16%, about 8% each. Depending, if you have something that is a higher design load, you may see a higher design fee, but that's gonna be pretty typical on streets. What we'll do then, we'll charge 15% on a general project, but if it's one where it's grant-funded at all, we are not allowed to charge that overhead to cover our overhead costs for an engineering department. We can only charge the specific time and effort for them. So we do try to look, to some extent, we're pick and choose which ones make the most sense for us to allocate folks out to. If we know that we're gonna have to hit those time and efforts, it almost makes more sense if we're gonna hire someone out for engineering services that we're gonna do it on those projects as opposed to the HMA one. We're covering it with our GO bond funds, and we can charge this, pretty much a standard engineering fee and try to be something that's truer to what the market is, if that makes any sense.
Sure, absolutely. You guys good?
Yeah, I'm the next item up, so I'll just stick around.
Why don't you just stick around? For number six, resolution amending fees for building construction permits for the city of Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This is an update to three classes of our permit fees, wiring, plumbing, and demolition. As we're going through the process of updating to I-Works, a lot of that will be online and self-selection of permit types in order to fill out a permit online. I guess, looking at that, our minor and majors are, seem somewhat subjective, and we want to make sure we're consistent across the board, and as well, we have not raised the wiring, plumbing, or demolition in quite some time. So this will be a minor change that, doing away with minor and major fees for wiring and plumbing and just having that one fee for residential, it'll be $15 for all wiring. For plumbing, it'd be $15 for water piping and 50 for commercial, 15 for residential, 50 for commercial, and then demolition, it'd be $50 for each house, and then we do not do any inspections on garages, so that would just be a sign-off, so. Trying to make it easier with our I-Work system that there's less confusion of individual going online and asking for a minor, and then we're going to have to change it later so that there's just one system that's easier for everyone.
You guys good?
Yep, streamlined.
And this would be effective July 1 when we're looking to go to the I-Work, so it would not be until that time.
Okay, well done. All right, we've got four hearings set for June 4. First is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Tampa Building Permeable Alley. Yes. Second is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project. The third is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project. Right on. The fourth is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 1106 Washington Street Drainage Improvements. Getting her done. Okay, moving to discussion items. Did you have anything to say on that, Mr. Tisland? Just checking. To discussion items, DPI update. Mr. Freiber?
All right, I'm coming back.
Coming back, coming at you.
This is the fascinating part of it, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brings out the schoolteacher in your seat.
Thanks for letting me come in here, I think I was semi-asked to be here and semi-I-asked to be here, so glad to be here and to report to you all the great things that are happening with downtown Burlington with your Main Street program. To give you a little bit of background information, I think a lot of people know this, but just to repeat it, downtown Burlington is one of the first five Main Street communities in the state. We've met a Main Street program since nineteen eighty-six, so we're in our thirty-second year. There are currently fifty-four Main Street programs in the state, and I think we have the best one, so I'm a little bit biased. Main Street was a program put together by the National Trust for Historic Preservation back in the nineteen seventies to revitalize small towns, and in fact, downtown Burlington applied to be one of the first five pilot programs in nineteen seventy-seven. It didn't make it in, but when former Governor Branstad first began the Main Street Iowa program, we were accepted in that first round back in nineteen eighty-six. So part of being a Main Street program is that I am tasked with reporting statistics to the state on a monthly basis, so that gives us a really great basis for all the solid information that we have on the direction downtown is headed. So Main Street program, just very briefly, is economic revitalization in the guise of historic preservation. So when we have these historic downtowns, how do we make that more economically strong for our communities? We do that with what's called the Four Street Approach for Main Street Design, Promotion, Organization, and Economic Restructuring. And each one of those really corresponds with one of the committees for Downtown Partners. So Organizations, our Board of Directors, they are composed of a group of stakeholders, we have some city representation on there, some private property representation, business owners, some residents of the downtown, so they can guide our program of work. The Promotions Committee, Marketing Promotions, deals with marketing events, and we do quite a few events a year, every year, as you remarked. The Design Committee is taking a look at, how does our downtown appear? What are the, how do the buildings look? What can be done in terms of improving the streetscape, signage, things like that? And finally, Economic Restructuring Point is what we call our Business Development Committee. So that's tasked with, how do we make downtown Burlington a more attractive place for people to invest and to start or grow their businesses? So I'm not gonna go through this entire list for you, I've got a couple of additions that I'm gonna talk about, but I did want to get some of those basic facts in front of you. I'll kind of go over the first page or so. Like I said, I keep track of everything on a month-to-month basis, but I thought it'd be easier just to do this year-end. So at the end of twenty seventeen, we had about two point nine million dollars in private property redevelopment, twenty-one completed property rehabs, that can include anything from new signage to roofs to interior work, exterior work, whole building rehabilitation. We did have a net loss of two businesses and thirty-two FTE jobs last year. I do track jobs, full-time and part-time. Certainly with US Bank moving out of downtown, that was a loss, we had some other businesses closing, had some opening. I'm glad to say, I think that trend's gonna be reversed this year, I do anticipate a net gain in businesses and jobs for twenty eighteen. We had eight private properties purchased, total investment of eight hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. It was a record year for us for volunteer commitment, three thousand nine hundred forty-nine hours were recorded for Downtown Partners. So that could be everything from attending our meetings to moving barricades, to running the farmer's market, to helping out with parades, planting flowers, all that kind of stuff. And as I remarked, Downtown Partners hosted fifty event days, the equivalent of almost one event a week. We are gonna have more than one event a week this year when you total it all out. I thought you might be interested in how the numbers compare with previous years and where we're at on the whole. We have a hundred fifty-nine apartments in the downtown, seventeen owner-occupied condos or single-family homes, there's actually three single-family homes within the downtown SMID Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, where essentially ninety to ninety-five percent occupancy at any one point, there's gonna be some people moving in or out, but we've seen high occupancy and that predates the Iowa fertilizer plant, it's been the case for quite a while now. We have fifty-one more residential units under construction right now, and construction's planned for an additional hundred-plus. I think those developers are gonna be coming to the work session in two weeks to talk a little bit about that, the projects on Valley Street. In total, since nineteen eighty-six, we've had just under seventy million dollars recorded and completed private property investment, and twenty-two point six million in private property acquisition. So our total in property investment in downtown Burlington since nineteen eighty-six is ninety-two point six million, which is the second highest of any of the Main Street communities. We have about fourteen million dollars in private investment underway right now that's not included in that ninety-two point six million dollar figure. I can tell you that in June two thousand eleven, we hit the benchmark of fifty million dollars in private investment in downtown, so that's pretty good to see fifty million dollars invested in twenty-five years. But since two thousand eleven, we've seen about another fifty million invested, so the rate of investment is greatly increasing. We've had two hundred fifty-five property purchases since nineteen eighty-six, six hundred eighty-one building projects completed. Right now, or at the end of twenty seventeen, we have a hundred ninety-seven employers downtown, so that includes private businesses, government, and nonprofits. Churches are included in there as well. One thousand one hundred nineteen full-time employees and three hundred ninety-three part-time employees. So if you think of downtown as an employer, a central employer, we are certainly one of the largest in the county. Total of ninety-two thousand one hundred ninety-eight volunteer hours recorded for Downtown Partners. I am the sole Downtown Partners full-time staff. We do have some support with people with our, work at the Greater Burlington Partnership, shared administrative staff, financial staff, and we also, this year, are fortunate to have Rachel Lindy working part-time, doing a lot of our events. So Rachel and I can't do it all ourselves, we rely on our board, our committees, and our many, many volunteers to get all this stuff done. I just figured this out today, 'cause despite having been an English major, I kind of like statistics, so I figured this out. The first four vacancy rate in the Central Business District, that is taking Jefferson all the way from Central to the river, and from the north side of Washington to the south side of Valley. So if you take kind of that central core, first four vacancy rate right now is eighteen percent, but we do have a number of business openings planned in the next few months, I expect that to be down to sixteen percent or less by the end of the year. Also, I always like to promote this figure from two thousand eight, which is when I began this job, through the end of last year, three hundred sixty-eight dollars was invested by private property owners for every dollar invested by the city in our program, so it's a pretty great return on investment. Lots of significant projects underway right now, not all of which Downtown Partners is responsible for, but we are certainly engaged and involved in them. The historic Tampa Complex Project, the planned redevelopment that I mentioned in the three hundred and four hundred blocks of Valley Street, redevelopment of the former Expert Tire Building, some great new businesses going in there, work on the Depot Diner, again, a city project that we received the Main Street Challenge Grant for last year. This'll be the second year that we do the new parking signage, both identification signage and directional signage. We have a group that is doing fundraising, private fundraising for relighting the Great River Bridge, that's gonna be about a three hundred thousand dollar project when that is all over. Of course, you guys are gonna be talking a lot in the next few years about the Tiger Grant, talk about flood remediation. I think there's a Greening America Cities conversation happening next month. Very excited by some of the meetings we've had with the consultants hired through the EPA Planning Grant, looking at brownfields, looking at building and site redevelopment in the downtown, some of the most interesting meetings that I've been involved in in a long time. And the question mark on my list is hotel, hoping, crossing my fingers, that a downtown hotel happens.
Yes.
And then to go over briefly our goals, Downtown Partners does set goals for every year. This year, our goals include completing the cleanup and repair efforts at three hundred Washington and reviewing our efforts to sell that property for redevelopment. All of our grant work to repair the roof and the roof structure is completed. I'd like to do a little bit more cleanup. Counselor Wilson will give you a call, 'cause I know how much fun he had last time. You know, the cleaner, we can get that building inside and out, the better, easier it's gonna be to sell, and I'm hopeful, again, a hotel project across the street will probably help the sustainability of that property. We're assisting in marketing spaces available for lease or for sale, including creating and updating an inventory of listing sheets. This is kind of a complicated thing because we don't regularly get contacted by building owners to let us know, hey, my building's for sale, hey, I have a space for lease. Some of that's based on, if I happen to see a sign in the window, some of it's based on word of mouth. But we do think that enabling property owners to more easily market their properties, put that information on our website where it's easily accessed, it's gonna make it easier for everybody when they're trying to fill their spaces. Create a public art guide and assist in efforts to add new public art and/or enhance public spaces. Downtown Partners, years and years ago, had a public art brochure, and a number of those pieces are no longer existing or they've been moved, it's very out of date, so when we looked at whether or not we should update that, we said, let's just start from scratch. We've got a lot of different things than when that was first created back in the nineteen nineties. I'm gonna skip over one thing, then revamp the event and general promotion efforts, develop a branding concept to align with marketing strategies, which sounds like a lot of jargon, and it is, but it's our way of saying that we are looking at the branding efforts for downtown Burlington. I know there's been a lot of discussion on that. We've had meetings, a series of meetings and discussions with stakeholders over the past two or three years. There's an effort to brand downtown, or a portion of downtown is the Snake Alley District, and we've seen some support for that. We also see some support for taking a slow approach and making sure we do everything correctly, we don't want to put a lot of effort into something and throw it out there, and if it doesn't work, then we have to go back to the drawing board. So I'm glad that we have a good staff at the Greater Burlington Partnership that's kind of working on the graphic and video work involved in this. So you'll be seeing more of that coming, I think, very shortly, we're putting some of that information together. Right now, kind of sharing it privately with our stakeholders, but as soon as we're ready to go public, we'll make sure you know as well. Working with the city and other stakeholders, as I mentioned, to support the redevelopment of the riverfront and other catalyst sites identified in the Brownfield Plan. And that kind of leads me to the one I skipped over, hosting the Main Street Iowa Model Community Facade Workshop in June. Several years ago, when downtown completed its fifteen storefronts, remodels and redevelopments for the Community Development Block Program facade program, Main Street Iowa and Iowa Economic Development Authority recognized that we did a really pretty good job despite having some hiccups along the way. They've looked at some of the other really remarkable storefronts and facade projects that we've had. So they have asked us to be one of four communities to host what they're calling kind of a regional forum, and the one that they would like us to host is on facade rehabilitation. So that's gonna take place in the partnership offices pretty much all day, say, from about nine to four on June twenty-first, free, open to the public, but we're definitely hoping we can get some people from other neighboring towns who are considering doing a community development block grant project or just individual facade rehabilitation. We'll have people from the state there, Charlie Nichols, Stephanie Waples from Cleaner and Associates, and myself are gonna be doing a presentation, do some walking tours to kind of talk about some of the stuff that's been done. So the nice thing about being asked to host this community forum is that we also got the opportunity, as a thank you, from the Downtown Resource Center, to get a little bit of technical assistance, and what I told them is that we would like some direct one-on-one technical assistance for our downtown businesses, particularly for our retailers and restaurants who are such a valuable core of the business taking place downtown. So I'm happy to say that Downtown Partners is gonna host a business consultant, Margie Johnson, in June, just before this, actually, June twelfth and thirteenth, free of charge to us and free of charge to the businesses. She will be giving a presentation in our offices from eight to about nine-thirty or so on Tuesday, June twelfth, open to retailers and restaurants, talking a little bit about what the trends are in marketing and merchandising, online sales, that kind of thing. So I think it's gonna be really valuable for the businesses who plan to come. It's not just for downtown businesses, other local businesses are welcome to come. I've even reached out to some of the other Main Street organizations in our region and said, hey, if you want to invite your merchants in to hear Margie speak, this is a good opportunity. So along with that, Margie is gonna be doing six one-on-one business consultations, totally private, just sort of the business owner, talking about maybe what some of their struggles are and what some of the opportunities might be for them to grow. So I've got that going on, and then, I'm gonna stop talking in a minute here, I promise. This is a really busy week for us, I hope some of you will be attending the Zach Manheimer Talk tomorrow at the Capitol Theater at noon, again, free and open to the public, I've heard Zach speak a number of times. He's pretty inspirational, I think, it's sort of talk, when he talks about creative place-making and engaging your community and how they can advance cultural causes and really kind of grow your community from within, pretty cool stuff, so I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. I'll be giving him a tour in the morning and then the afternoon, giving a tour to a group from Roquette America that's looking, they just come on some inspiration about doing projects in Keokuk. The Jefferson Street Farmer's Market, going really well, even though we had a very late start to the growing season. Really happy with the way that's taken off since we moved into Jefferson Street, this is the third year that it's been on Jefferson. The merchants love it, the vendors love it, and I think our customers love it. And this Thursday, if you have a four-legged or even fewer or more-legged pet, it will be Pet Day at Farmer's Market, they're gonna have a pet parade and prizes for the winners and some judges. I've seen everything down there from snakes to parrots to teat pigs and, yeah, just about everything, mostly dogs, and I expect to see even more of them this Thursday. So Farmer's Market is four thirty, seven thirty, three hundred, five hundred blocks of Jefferson. The Saturday, we are doing the downtown flower planting right in the middle of the Great River Bridge race, so we're gonna do our best to avoid, you know, tripping Jim or Eric or somebody.
No excuse.
Yeah, that's right. So we'll be doing that at ten o'clock, all you need is a trowel, no experience necessary, we're gonna meet at the rear, the Valley Street side entry, entering, the Valley Street side of Nancy Navy Park. So that's something we've taken on the last few years, all those one hundred and thirty or whatever downtown planters, most of those are taken care of by Downtown Partners, we're lucky enough to get some grant funding to pay for that plant material, pay to have them maintained throughout the growing season. And then finally, I have to talk about the Snake Alley Criterium coming up in just a few weeks, hard to believe that it's so close. I wanted to mention this year, we will have a new Criterium route. This is in large part because of the move to the new police station, we did not want the route to cut off the police station completely like it would have, so instead of turning right on Columbia this year, it's gonna continue straight on Sixth Street and zigzag down Court to Fifth, to Fourth, and back down, then come straight down Jefferson from Main. So police station will be standing alone and people- So police station will be standing alone and people can get in and out of there if they need to, and looking forward to some great weather. Again, huge volunteer commitment for the Snake Eye Criterium. I'm going to take a breath and a sip of water, but I'd be happy to try to answer questions if you have any.
Questions for Mr. Freiber.
More of an observation. First of all, you do a lot with very little, so congratulations. It's a hell of an achievement. I did notice a little Freudian slip in your DPI funding, and I can't say we can do anything about it this year, but you've twice listed that the City of Burlington's financial contribution to Downtown Partners has remained $15,000 since 2005, and then also the great majority of the Schmidt is in TIF, so the Schmidt income has increased, has not increased substantially since it was created in 1996. Then you repeated it a paragraph later.
Yeah, you know, that's because I was putting this together at 4 o'clock, John.
I know, but I understand, but it does illustrate the point, and I guess what my smart aleck point is, it does illustrate the point, you're doing a lot without a lot of help. So maybe eventually if we get on the right track, we can ante up there a little bit more.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I do want to make it clear that kind of the key to a Main Street program and to the program agreement that you'll be considering next week is that it's a public-private partnership. It can't be all on the city to make downtown a great place, and it can also be on the business owners and building owners. It really takes everybody working together to see the amazing improvements that we've seen in downtown, and so we're very thankful for the city's support, not only financially, but I have great respect for city staff. I work closely with the Development Department, with Public Works, and of course with Jim. So very happy to have a great team putting this all together.
Shudder to think where we'd be without Main Street, embarking on that program years ago.
I've seen some programs that were in the Main Street program and left, and it's kind of sad. Actually, we had a visit with one last week, a community that happened in the Main Street program, left it about 20 years ago, and now they're thinking they need to get back in.
Hey, Steve, can you share just a little bit more about the program at the Capitol tomorrow? I understand it's sponsored by the Capitol and was opened to anybody?
It is, and I know, I haven't really, I haven't had a part in putting this together. Tammy McCoy from the Art Center and the Capitol Theater heard Zach Manheimer speak about a month or so ago, two months ago. I've heard him speak a couple of times, so she was, I think, so invigorated by that discussion. She said, we really want to have him here. He spoke at the State Planning Conference, was it two, three years ago? And it was really cool because I came to work that morning and there was a guy standing on the Sixth Street Bridge taking pictures of the warehouse buildings. I'm like, I'd love to see people taking pictures of buildings. And then later, I'm like, oh, that was him. And he kind of went on about how you have an amazing set of buildings here, there's so much opportunity for redevelopment, so that's always nice to hear. I tell people that all the time, and it's great to hear from outsiders.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I know they've invited a lot of community leaders, business leaders, city staff, that kind of thing, but certainly open to the general public as well.
And relatively short, I think 35 minutes is what they're, so people could fit it into their lunchtime.
Thirty-five minutes and then Q and A afterwards.
Yeah. Thanks, Steve.
I would encourage people to stop by one of our many fine downtown dining establishments to pick up lunch to bring you in.
Well said, well said. Nice move, my friend. Any other questions for Steve?
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much. I will be back here next week for the agreement.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay, our next presentation is the Turf Budget and Shared Parking Agreement, Dr. Ash, Kevin Carr.
Yep. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to approach you again two weeks later, and I don't have my sidekick Jason here, nor do I have Matt Shin. Those two gentlemen have other commitments tonight, so I brought my other sidekick, Kevin Carr, who's not on the board, but he supports our efforts to develop our finances and our budget and so on and so forth. So if we get into some questions about, specific questions, then Kevin's here to bail me out or at least to give some explanation to it. So I appreciate Kevin being here. He just drove in from Lake of the Ozark, so he's maybe a little tired. So thank you, Kevin, for being here. So when we talked last, we talked about the need to share some details on the budget, and so we'll do that this evening, talk a little further about the shared parking agreement and where we're headed with that. And then this next item is something that we're going to be asking you to do, is to waive some building fees. And then we want to talk a little bit about, or request anyway, expedition of the extension of the Broadway Street. And then on a side note, it's not listed there, but on a side note, there was some question about the market study, and so I wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Secondly, we, first of all, we did do a market study and it was completed in 2012. So this is a secondary market study, and it will also include the expanded conversation about, in consideration of the Recplex and the possibilities of efficiencies there. So at that, we should be seeing some response and some feedback on that in 90 to 120 days. All right, here's some conversation about the budget. Our goal is to develop a break-even analysis, and nobody is going to believe me standing here saying, we're going to break even and everything's going to be, in fact, we might even make money. You're not going to buy that because that was sold before, and that's really not the case either here. But we also wanted to develop something, we had to have something. So first of all, we developed our budget and our assumptions based upon, the goal was to establish weekend activity. So we didn't take into consideration during the weekday or weeknight, just weekend activity. So what kind of finances or revenue could be generated based on that? And then could weekend activity pay for the bulk of the facility? And so that's what we were looking at. And then our conclusion, based upon our analysis, and we had lots of different people working on this, it wasn't just Kevin and Jason, but we talked with soccer people, we talked with softball people, because we'll be able to play both those sports inside there. We'll also be able to offer batting cages for both softball and baseball, and we'll also have concessions inside of that facility. So yes, the net income is projected to be minus $35,000. Now, that's not averaging, or that's not acting in a way that you're covering all your expenses, is it? No, it's not. But we did the analysis and we came to this projection of being under balance or out of balance by $35,000. But again, it does not include any weekday or additional weekend activity. It's a very conservative approach, and when I show you the budget, I'll talk a little bit more in detail on that. So here's what we're looking at. The administrative payroll is about $116,000, one full-time, one part-time permanent staff. So we need to have somebody that's out there marketing, somebody out there that's selling, someone who's out there developing a schedule of activities and events and drawing in these teams. Our occupancy costs, we estimate to be $66,000, that's heating, lights, water, so forth. And you can see in this pie chart, the largest part of our costs, of course, are administrative and payroll, and then occupancy costs are secondary. And then insurance, we have gotten our bids from, or estimates from, from an area insurance company. So this isn't just a guess, a guess at this, it's the reality of what the insurance market is all about. So, and the DNO is directors and officers, so we have even factored in costs to cover their activities as well. And then supplies and housekeeping, $32,000, this general upkeep of the facility. You've got to clean the toilets, you've got to vacuum, you've got to do different things to keep the facility in good working order, just on a week-to-week basis. But then we have maintenance and repair, things are going to break, things are going to need some attention. So that's our fixed expenses, if you will. And then if we look at our net revenue, when we talk about conservative approach, we talked about two different ways in which we would go at establishing some weekend activity. First of all, we have hosted tournaments, and that's 10 weekends of activity, and that's where the Sports Facility Board would host the activities. We would set the agenda, we would get the teams in, we would work on that. And then the next one is 11 weekends of activity. This would be rental fees. This would be for the soccer clubs, the softball clubs, to have their own tournament, but just rent the facilities. So all total, that's 21 weekends from sometime in November through the first part of April. So 11 weekends, that's not very many weekends, I mean, 21 weekends, not very many weekends, but nonetheless, we took a conservative approach. We can expand on that, we can grow that, we can develop it, but we try to take a realistic conservative approach so that we weren't trying to grab the moon. And then we estimate about $20,000 for our concessions. Now, here are some of the items that we talked about that would produce additional revenue, weeknight activity. So allowing area sports teams to use the facility for different organizations, sports organizations to be able to rent the facilities for indoor evening activity and also any weekend that we're not actually in the facility using it for activity. Also, developing further our 21 weekends to the off-peak weekend activity. So there's room to grow there, there's opportunity to grow. We just built that 21-weekend schedule so far. Community use, so how many teams out there, how many high schools, how many middle schools might want to use the soccer field or the softball arrangement for their practices? Team practices, batting cages, as I said earlier. And then there are some synergies with the courts, that's our second part of our project, and that would be located at SEC, and then the Recplex. And that, what I was thinking about and what I really was trying to get across there is that we're going to have this 80,000-square-foot facility just across the street from the Recplex. And what's to keep it from being used by the Recplex for additional soccer activity or softball activity? Within the facility, you can have two young children's softball, or you can have one to eight soccer fields, and that would be available during April through October. So that could be added to the inventory or the venue, an added venue to the Recplex for their scheduling purposes. So there's some synergies that can get, that can help us there as well. Now, as we move to the shared parking, what we're trying to talk about there is, we understand that there's a need for additional parking. All of us understand that parking is a premium and that there's not enough of it, there's not enough cover, hard surface parking, and we understand that. So what we've been thinking about and what we've had some, Jason has had some basic conversation with Nick and some of the city staff related to developing a shared parking agreement where what is existing now could be, through MOU, could be utilized, and my understanding is that 50%, that would meet about 50% of the parking requirement for the permits. And so we'd have to figure out how to come up with the other 50%. So in that regard, we're going to be asking the council to invest in this program at a rate of $500,000, and that would be inclusive of the parking lot. So we would take care of the additional parking utilizing some of those dollars. The Recplex would have access to the additional parking, so it isn't just a one-sided deal here. It's the Recplex then would have access to that facility, that parking facility, in this shared agreement. So it isn't just what exists currently that we would be asking city to allow us to use, but we would also be in that agreement working to allow the new parking, the additional parking around the Turf Building to be available for the Recplex because it's just across the street. And then in that regard, we'd be working with the city staff to develop the MOU and define all of the terms, because I think there's probably going to be some items that are going to surface in our conversations about who's going to handle this and who's going to handle that. So it isn't more than, it's more than just simply a number of parking, available parking spaces, it's who's going to handle this, that, or the other. And I think those are some of the conversations that we need to have. Again, this is a picture of the potential location of the indoor dome, and this is Broadway that stops, currently stops right here, and we're wanting to ask the city to expedite the development of this extension of Broadway and then help us with the parking on the side of the, on the side of the facility. So here's a little closer view, and we're not, we work with staff on number of parking spaces and whatnot because we'll want to make sure that we're producing and providing enough parking, but this is the idea, at least what it might look like once it gets planned out completely. And so we're also asking for consideration of the building permits and the fees that are associated with it, and we're asking city council to waive the fees so that we can proceed with getting this structure underway. It's about, it's a little over $4 million structure that we're wanting to build, and we've currently raised a little over 6.2 million or have committed 6.2 million towards this project. So we, and we've signed contracts with Carl Nelson to start development on the facility, and he has been working with city staff to dot the i's and cross the t's on all the requirements. So this is a list of things that we're asking as it relates to the Broadway Street extension. It's currently in the capital improvement plan for 2020. We're just asking for consideration to advance it a year, and we understand that the RISE Grant application is underway. And then it would be helpful for the approval of the building permit. And then this is the location of the dome facility and then the extension of the Broadway So our future ask would be a capital dollar is directed to this project, which would be inclusive of the expanded parking options so that we can meet the building requirements. And in capital improvement, and this is something we introduced last time, and Jason has introduced it or talked about it a number of times, and that would be some type of, develop some type of system that allows this project to receive some of the new hotel motel tax. So we'd develop a base, working with staff, develop a base, and then some type of percentage increase over that base related to the project. So that is the presentation, so we'll stop there and see what kind of questions you have.
Council, quest.
You talked about parking, last time you were here, you talked about parking with crushed rock initially. Is that, has that changed in your plan?
Yes, yes, I stood corrected that it would be not gravel or crushed rock, it would be concrete.
It would be paved parking.
Okay.
And how many parking spaces are, is, does, how many parking spaces are planned at this point in the development as it stands?
That I don't have a fixed number on. I think we had put in some 235 spaces, but whether that's all needed is another question.
The original park, or the original project, I think, is nine slots in that first phase?
The front part is only nine spots?
That they're paving.
The picture, this picture.
But overall, yeah.
That first, the row that's immediately adjacent to the building there, that's about nine slots that they're going to be doing permanent right away. The rest is what they're asking funding for to help with.
Right.
I guess my problem with the drawing, the way it sits, when it, is there, can we go, if we could go back to it, is currently most of the traffic comes in off Division Street. I have a feeling that the Recplex is still going to have a parking problem because people are going to realize that that parking is behind on the south end of the building. So they're still going to park in the So they're still going to park in the grassy area off, off the, off the Recplex lot. Yeah, that's what my concern is. Because it's behind it. Now, eventually, when Broadway gets the extension, that might go away, but it's kind of hidden back there. That's a concern.
The other, the other question I have for you, Dr. Ash, is now, the indoor complex gets the destination fee that, that the hotels are paying now.
Yes.
So you would want that in addition to some hotel motel tax funds?
Well, again, knowing that these types of ventures rarely break even, we went and talked with hotel, the hotels for destination fee. A six, six, seven of the hotels signed on readily to voluntarily charge a certain percentage. And then that money goes into the visitor bureau for control, oversight and control. And then the, the purpose of those funds is to help cover any overage that we might have. But also, it has a larger application, and that would be for helping us with marketing. To get, to get this thing started, to get it going, to get it, we're going to need some seed money. And so we're expecting that some of those dollars, and there are some agreements between the, the hotels and the visitor bureau on how much of those dollars can go towards overhead or the overage of the budget. So there's, yes, there's some of that built in, but I think at the other, the other part of it too is we're, we're looking at the hotel motel tax to help with long-term maintenance. And I think we shared last time is that, that dome has about a twenty, twenty-two year lifespan, and it's a, right, in today's dollars, it's a million dollars to replace. The turf has approximately the same lifespan, and it has roughly about a million dollar replacement fee. So we're, we're saying, let's not, let's not look too short here, be short-sighted, and then, and then hang a big problem on someone down the road. I'm not going to be here doing this in twenty years. Someone else is, and that, what I don't want them to do is go, these people weren't even thinking. What were they thinking? And I want them to look at this and say, these people were thinking, they were planning ahead. And so that's what we would be using the hotel motel tax for, as well as any positive revenue that we might see from the efforts that we're putting forward. It's going to be a number of years before we see some more positive numbers because we're, we're getting started, and then we also want to build the courts and then a startup for all of that.
Dr. Ash, what percentage of that increment are you looking to capture?
Increment of the, I don't know, we don't have that.
Of the additional revenue?
We don't have that. That, that would be for later conversation and negotiations. We don't have any of that figured out yet. We don't even have an understanding of what the base should be.
Okay. What, what expectation do you guys have from the city of West Burlington and the county?
We are, we are working, in fact, we just got an email today, I don't know if I didn't get a chance to read it, but we're, we're looking at, we're going to have to finance this thing. And so it's possible that we could finance it and utilize a not-for-profit funnel opportunity, avenue. And we would, just like we did with our, all the sciences building, we approached the city of West Burlington to be the, what do we call it?
Conduit.
The conduit. So to be, it would be a conduit loan. And if, and it'd be, the loan itself would be tax-free because it's city government. And that would save us about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in finance costs. So we're going to be asking, if, if everything is approved in that regard, we're going to be asking the city of West Burlington to be the conduit and, and help us go from there. That would be their, basically their investment.
That isn't any cash from them, though.
I'm sorry?
That isn't any cash from them, though, is it?
Not at this point, no.
And that's something we would have the ability to do, right? As a, act as a conduit as well? I mean, any municipal?
Well, it's a matter of, I mean, certainly can. It's a matter of what kind of projects you already have loan dollars out for.
Sure.
You're not looking, I don't think to do a loan on this, this first phase, the indoor rec facility, I don't think that this, the court, or isn't designed to have a loan for it, is it?
The turf?
The turf.
Yes, we have, we'll have to borrow money to.
Do you?
To build it.
Oh, it's capitalized with the.
Matt, back to your parking. My initial note said that Phase Two would have two hundred and thirty-five parking spots. And if there's a large event out there, they have people directing traffic, so I don't see them mistakenly parking where we don't want them to park. I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
I think we can put some sandwich.
Either, I just wanted to see the parking in place when the project goes out.
I, I think we could put some sandwich boards out for directing parking as well. But it's certainly something we, we need to be considerate of. We're not done asking, West Burlington or the, or the county, but, but we need to get your approvals or your guidance so that we can proceed, so. So what I would like to be able to do, and I don't exactly know how to do this, but I'd like to be able to bring or have some items on the next, your next council meeting agenda related to the items of ask, so.
I mean, I'd really, I'm, I think I'm fine with it, but I, I really, and I'm tempted to put, I don't even know if it's possible, put a caveat on it where the other two municipalities are going to be required to participate by giving funds, not just being a pipeline for funds.
Well, you can, you can do that, but.
It's a really tough thing to do.
But, but I think what you do, though, is you handcuff us.
Yeah, I know, and that's my concern.
And then I, then I get stuck if they say, nah. And that's, you know, I don't control them. I mean, anyway, if, if that's what you choose to do, that's what you choose to do.
Jim, we talked about this earlier, as far as the funding of it goes. Remind me, were we looking at taking that out of the sale from the manor money that we have?
If you're saying how you could do it?
Right, that's what I'm asking.
You have, you have two options. One, well, I guess, three, a GO bond, regular GO bond that you're using debt service payments to cover, five hundred thousand, you could do that. You could do a new bond issue for TIF financing for parking out there. And you could justify it based off of expanded tourism, et cetera, what you're bringing into the community because that is a significant draw to the community. Or you could use the cash that we, the cash payment that was received here this last month, we put that into a capital project fund, just a miscellaneous capital project fund. The one point two million dollars, it's sitting there, just waiting for an ultimate decision on how that gets used or.
I thought we were going to use the majority.
My, my recommendation originally had been towards Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. When, when we were talking about this two, a year and a half ago, you've had multiple things come up that I think that you've figured out ways to spend about three million dollars out of the one point two million as potential. I mean, so, yeah, there, there are different things that you could talk about potential use and that, that funding for, and this is one of them. If you were to do that, John, you mentioned an issue with the parking in the grass that we still have out there. Even to pave some drive accesses in there and still allow then parking off of it on the grass, similar to what's done out at the B Stadium, would be beneficial. Maybe that, maybe there's, I, I could see looking at, we have about that five hundred thousand figure that you have some flexibility to do something with. I could see saying that you want to see that occur, maybe, maybe limiting the size of the parking lot, immediately adjacent to the indoor facility, the two hundred and thirty spots that's set up there is not necessarily, I mean, to meet their, their construction standards, I think that they have a requirement probab-, what, maybe a hundred slots?
Just think of something like that, a hundred and ten, something like that.
Capacity divided by four is our building, our zoning code requirement.
And, and then you can use half of it off of the Recplex, Recplex's existing parking lot, so. We, you can, you can change the size of what gets done over there, is what I'm trying to say. And I'd like to see both of those talked about, part of it, but we've also talked about some of our other stranded costs that are going to happen with this project. You have a sewer line extension that has to occur to go down to, to connect into.
Their storm sewer.
The, the storm sewer, I'm sorry.
The road net.
So that we have, we have to tie down to the south of the Recplex to make this happen. There's some sidewalk connections that we've looked at between the two facilities that need to occur too. If, if we're having to put those in, those need to be accounted for somehow, and I'd want you to be thinking about those as all things that are part of this overall issue.
To me, this is one of those things where the TIF really makes a lot of sense because of the economic benefit of it. So, I mean, do we have any estimates on the additional parking that we were looking at doing prior to this project coming up?
What was, when, I don't even remember the figures that we'd put out.
Five to six hundred thousand, I thought.
Because here's what I don't want to do.
But that was based on, depending on how many spaces, and we could raise or lower that depending on how many spaces were provided.
And, and part of me says, let's just, I mean, I'm, let's look at the TIF option, let's just do the entire project and get it over with, so we're not having this conversation in two years where we've still got a parking problem.
How big of a part of you is saying that? Most of it? Wow. Because the biggest part of me is not saying what you're saying, so definitely not saying that. You're looking for, you're looking for some direction tonight?
Well, to get a feel, I know you can't vote on things tonight, but you have a sense of.
But you're, you are looking for a feel tonight.
I mean, out of the options that are there, if you are going to consider it, I, out of the three that, that I mentioned, GO bonding, TIF bonding, or using the cash payment, I would use the cash payment.
That's what I was looking for.
I don't know that I'm, I mean, I'd prefer to not have to use anything towards anything, but you know, I'd, I'd like to pay down debts. But if you're going to look at something, that would be the, the avenue I would look at. I, I don't, I'm not a, personally, I'm not a particular fan of using, going out and doing a new TIF debt for a parking, if, if it can be avoided. I mean, it can be done, but I'd prefer not to if possible. I mean, when you get down to it, a downtown, if you're looking at doing a deck downtown, I don't know any other way that you're practically going to fund it than use that through a TIF funding project. But given that you have other options, and this isn't that anyway, I, it's not one that I'm recommending.
Let's see, I just want to, let's get a pulse check tonight on, on comfortability, that's not a word, but let's get a, let's get a, let's get a pulse tonight on where you guys are at, at least so that we can throw, let's say, Dr. Ash a bone, but he can get some kind of idea where we're at on this. He knows where you're at.
The economic impact to Burlington, West Burlington surrounding communities would be tremendous, tremendous. I'm in.
I don't know, I think the only way I would, I would support it, if I had to pick one of those three options, would be the cash. But I don't, I, I, I just feel like we have so many other projects and issues going on right now that it's hard for, it's hard for me to say, you know, here's the five hundred.
Your biggest financial issue in the future is not going to be next year, it's going to be.
The year after.
The year after. And it's going to be, how do you transition your funding on?
No doubt.
That's why.
Seven or eight positions.
That's why I liked the idea of holding on to that cash. The other reason why I like the idea of using the TIF was because we talked about the fact that we need to extend sewer and there's other, other infrastructure things that need to be done there, and that can all be wrapped into that one. And that's going to be higher, that's going to be more than five hundred thousand, right?
And even if you can do TIF, which, I mean, you have the ability to do it, you have to think through what your overall debt load is.
No, I understand that.
We, with, particularly with the flood wall downtown, are, over the course of the next four years, because we have to finance that, we're bumping up right at that seventy percent of our debt usage. So the more that we pull on other projects, you're either going to be having a discussion now about violating your tip, your debt policy, which you can do, or making a decision to defer some other things that are going on. And that's, I can, do you have enough TIF value, or value within the TIF district to pay for it? Yes. Do you have, but we are fairly well-leveraged as a community, and that, we do need to be cognizant of where that part stands, too.
Where, where do we think, or do we have any estimates on the infrastructure improvements that are going to be needed outside of the parking lot?
It's going to be a lot of.
You got, your RISE, your RISE application, Nick, you put together is about one point three million maybe? And, and that, that's on a fifty-fifty split. The other portion of Broadway that, that we can't do as part of the RISE is going to be another, I'm going to guess just by taking a look at the size, the distance there, another four hundred thousand?
Just in case I don't get back.
So, and you can't do that portion of Broadway until after the RISE is done. Otherwise, you, you invalidate the justification for getting RISE funds.
These two, two access points.
Yep. Because if you connect it, if you get it too far down, you're connecting the two and you now, I mean, RISE won't fund it. But anyway, the, the two pieces of roadway that you're looking at, by the time that we go and if, if we're successful getting RISE funding, we're going to be spending a million dollars. We're looking at doing that anyway, to, both to enhance the industrial park and to provide extra, a better traffic flow for the Recplex. So that's not for this project. But you change your timing on it and you change some issues with our, our debt capacity. Because you're, you're now pulling forward debt from a couple of years out into a spot where we're more constrained with debt.
So then it just leaves us tackling the manpower issue a couple of years down the road then, right?
That's another issue.
And yeah, but I mean, still.
Well, I guess I, I, here, I, the Recplex, I don't think you can argue with the success of it. And while I, I'm, I'm on the fence, because I'd love to do this project, but I am concerned about if I'd want, I don't think five hundred grand, for us to plan on five hundred grand is enough because we have some other expenses associated. And we're also out there on the island again by ourselves without what you said, Matt, with other communities chipping in at least something. So I'm gonna, it's, it's going to require some thought on my part, but I'm willing to look at it. That's about as good as answer I can give you, Doctor.
If we, part of, from a, from a staff perspective, there, we do see a benefit to having the parking get done. So, I mean, that's, that helps out the Recplex as well. So there, there are some benefits to doing this for both entities. So make sure that, at least to keep that as part of the thought process of what you're thinking.
At a minimum, we're almost killing two birds with one stone here because we're helping them with their project, but then we're also helping the parking situation that we're kind of.
I got that. My concern is the way they have the parking is not a real benefit for the Recplex. Because of, you know, we can't, we're, my favorite parking guy is over here, and he'll vouch for the fact, you can't get people to walk three blocks to go anywhere.
How would you, how would you?
Well, I'd almost kick it, I'd almost kick it around.
To the other side?
The majority of the parking's on the, the side of the, of the Recplex. It's on the west side of the building, if, if.
Are we redesigning the parking tonight?
Well, no, I'm just saying that.
Remember, John, it's for wintertime use, though.
I understand that, but you're, you're going to, you're talking about spilling over parking on both facilities. And if you're going to spill over parking in both facilities, they're too far away. And that's, that's, I'm going to be honest, you asked my opinion, that's an issue for me because it's too far away. It's on the wrong side of the building.
From the Recplex?
Yeah, it's on the wrong side of the building.
Part of the design that went on and the thought process for how that building lays out, Jason isn't here to talk about that, but the partnership has some.
They still got to walk all the way down here.
Was looking at, how does this lot lay and how does this, how does this potentially impact fut-, future development of the remaining slots? And part of the layout that they have in here has to do with addressing that from the partnership's perspective. I think the partnership's donating a land to this.
For a dollar, we're going to lease it.
So, I mean, this is something that where they're, they're putting a significant investment into it too, and the layout there is, given the fact that they're, they're willing to do it, but they want it to be done in a way that doesn't compromise the use.
Sure.
And the other layout was one that they are more concerned about that compromise. And just to give some perspective for why it's set up that way.
Yeah. Well, I remember we were talking about it before, so. I, I mean, that's, those are my, those are my issues with it, to be honest with you. And Shane was asking for a feel, and I'd, I'd rather be honest about it than, than come to the vote and say, well, this, these, the reasons why. Those, those are my issues with it. Do I think we would benefit as a community from it? Heck, yes. Can we afford to do? Can we afford to do it, and how do, how do we best afford to do it so we can answer to our citizens and we're using the best stewards of their money? That's, those are my questions.
I kinda agree with you, John. I think it should be turned, uh, the other, it should be rotated, a quarter turn, and then that parking should be on the west side with the access points, cause then we would be more likely to have two access points quicker, because that Broadway road's gonna be completed faster, on a quicker timeline, right? That portion of it, the rise grant portion? The rise grant portion? Will be completed earlier? That's not Broadway. Right. Broadway portion, you can have a second. Okay. That's how I see it. All right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So you would, you would, uh, would, John, would that answer your question or concern if we went back to the drawing board? I don't know if this is feasible. No, I, I'm, I hate to have you spend any more development dollars on it, but it would, for me, it would be a little, it would be, it just seems to me that it would be more beneficial to Recplex, which is where we can justify putting some, some dollars in there beyond trying to support the, the inside facility. I, I don't wanna be the guy putting the water on the, on the project, but at the same time, we have to, look, how do we, how do we tell people, hey, we're gonna spend five hundred grand on this? And that's where my concern is, cause we already have some, a bunch of naysayers, right, wrong, or indifferent about the Recplex, uh, which I think the Recplex has been a huge success, but we're gonna have the, well, some of those in the community, they're gonna be upset with it, and I wanna be able to, strongly as I can justify it. So that would, it would go a long way for me, to be honest with you. What do you think, Shane?
I'm still scared of it, man. That's, that's a lot of money that, and again, I mean, I'm, well, I won't even go into that what I was gonna say, but the bottom line is, that's five hundred thousand dollars that I know that, you know, the city should do some type of park, but I just can't, uh.
And how's the time to talk about it?
Oh, man, well, I mean, I've, I've talked about it before, man, I can't, uh, I can't get excited about it. I mean, I think the project's a good idea, that's why I really feel bad, because I think this is gonna be great for the community, but I can't, uh, I can't, I'm not gonna bark and ra- and scream if you guys do, but I, I just don't feel comfortable yet. My, my level just disappeared.
What about you, Eddie?
Same. I'm not, you know, if, if we had to do it, I guess, the five hundred thousand cash, but.
I wanna spend the money.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm just finding it really hard to, to do that when we have so many other, other important, just as important projects. Um, you know, I know economic development is extremely important, so it's just hard to say where do we, where do we put that?
So are you more no than yes, Mr. Billups?
I'm more yes than no.
And, and yes, peanut butter?
Oh, yes, it is gonna grow our community. If we will build it, they will come.
She's a special lady, man. She's a special lady. God bless her. All right, so, uh, you've got three. Again, I'm not gonna try to, uh, I won't be holding a picket sign and screaming or doing anything like that, I just, again, I wanna be consistent where I'm at, that's, that's where I am. I'm glad you came back to Burlington from the Ozarks. Welcome back to America.
If we're gonna have something come forward to the council, it might not be this next week, uh, I'd like to have Eric and Nick work with Jesse on what are we looking at tentatively for different costs for the different pieces there, just to, to say, to allocate out, what are those potential dollars going to, to, because, and in part, and we have been trying to do the best, the committee has done its best trying to do two separate projects for the facility, and one, what's being done afterwards by the, the city with this funds, if that's gonna be done.
James, I just wanna bring up again, though, that I do wanna say this, if, if this is something that does go through, I, I do want to stress that I, I don't have to borrow any money. I'd, I'd rather use cash.
That's where we're trying to do, I, that's where I wanna try to keep it within that five hundred thousand. I mean, it's not like we're not doing other things with this, the street connection is a tremendous benefit to it, but it's, we're already looking at doing that. But that's, I do wanna look at what our costs are and make sure that we're addressing those in this.
We can keep it underneath that five hundred thousand.
And to make sure that they see what we're talking about and see if there's any pushback on that. A second request that they had was on the building permit fee. What, about how much was that, Eric?
A four million dollar project, it'd be about thirty-six thousand dollars.
And are you looking at that being part of the five hundred thousand contribution to the, on top of it?
He says, Dr. Ash goes, he almost did like my dog does me.
We're, we're trying to build a four million dollar structure here that's gonna have positive impact in our community.
Yeah.
So I'm just asking the, the council to consider what is being invested on a private level, as well as what Greater Burlington's putting in, and that's what I'm asking. That's, that's the basis for my ask.
So that's gonna be a sep- a separate request, and that, we'd probably want them brought forward at the same time. Something to think about with their third request on some, at some level of split on hotel motel. Um, I don't know what that agreement should look like. When I talked to Jason, just as a, a what-if, uh, two years ago, our hotel motel numbers were much different than what they are now.
Yes.
And at that time, I was thinking the, you know, the, we'd, we'd come in at nine hundred thousand the previous year, and I was thinking that you could take a look at, um, where we were and say, the next hundred thousand, twenty percent goes into
Right, right.
this, this piece on an ongoing basis. So you're allocating out twenty thousand a year, and the thought process is, is that that might, you, you talk about that being towards capital upgrades for, for the facility over time, and something could be built up, as a possible scenario for consideration. So that's a what-if to be thinking about. Something that I didn't talk about with Jason is, even at that point, was, are, are we gonna say that, that the Chamber is buying into that too? I mean, right now, if we were to say that nine hundred thousand, the next hundred thousand was split, like, they get twenty, twenty percent. Right now, thirty-five percent of that hundred thousand goes to the Chamber and sixty-five percent to us, something like that. Are we both giving up a pro-rata share of that, or is the expectation that the Chamber has kept hold?
So we need to know.
So I, I think it, it just.
I think that just, it goes back to the question I asked about the increment. I, you guys don't have that information yet, so.
No, and even, even coming to some, some understanding of what the base should be, the starting base, you could average them together.
Yeah.
And come up with that, or you could, um, do pre-fertilizer plant, say that's the base, or you could throw out the low and throw out the high, and then average those. So there's a number of different ways that, that we could approach developing a base.
The base is tough, cause it was nine ninety, nine hundred ninety thousand last year that we brought in. I'm trying to find the, where we had an actual number. It was eight seventy-seven the following year, and this year, we're more like
Seven.
seven seventy. And so what should, what's a realistic base? For next year's budget, I have right now, seven eighty-five.
I think it's just gonna come down to establishing that base as this project kicks off, and then determining, kinda looking back at those numbers and figuring out where that base was.
Right, and that's, and that's what I was alluding to earlier, is that it, it's just really a matter of conversation, negotiation, discussion. I'm not standing before you saying it needs to be this amount. Uh, Jason may have his feel, but, um, I, I'm not at that point yet. I'm trying to get us to first base, and I'm not even to first base yet.
I think you're there. I'd say you're there.
Well, I don't, may I be frank with my feelings, I, I don't feel that.
Right.
And so, what I'm scared of is that this council is gonna say, um, in whatever, uh, level of vote, mm, don't think so. And then I've gotta go pull the plug on a four million dollar project that I already have invested dollars in, and I say, I, this, um, Board of Directors, uh, of which I'm the president of the Board of Directors. So, it isn't necessarily my personal dollars, but it, it's dollars that we've been out there raising, and, um, I suppose we could always go back to Plan B, which was, uh, putting it in the old Raider Building and scrapping the whole dome structure. But I think there's some benefit of putting a new building, and, and I think I told you last time that the height of this thing would, would, uh, uh, you could put that brand-new hotel inside of it and still have room. That's how tall it is. And we think it's gonna be a great, uh, opportunity to really sell the Recplex and this facility. And then, and then with the Recplex, you have the opportunity to have eighty thousand square feet of a facility available to the Recplex. Even if we don't, um, see any, any other efficiencies in it, there's at least another one to eight fields in soccer, and two softball fields, not at the same time, but two softball fields, or one to eight soft, soccer fields, that could add to the, uh, uh, the inventory of the Recplex activities. And, yeah, it'll be indoors, but it's, it's gonna be like your outdoors, except you don't have the sun beating on you. So, I, I think there's some real benefits there. I certainly appreciate the fact there are some naysayers, uh, so, um, and that's unfortunate that, that we have individuals who have a fairly short side in this, in their, in their economic development, but, uh, we, we did not enter into this lightly. We've, we've tried to weigh the costs, we've tried to consider, and, um, so we're placing these requests and this information before you for, uh, consideration. And, but I just need to know, uh, not a vote tonight, but just a sense, uh, do I have more homework to do? Or do I just hold my breath until the vote, or do I already know sort of where it's gonna go? And if it's, uh, gonna go south on me, I need to know that, because I, I'm, I gotta start pulling the plug on stuff. I've gotta stop a contractor, and I've gotta pay whatever penalties are involved with that. To stop that, we've already, um, invested sixteen thousand dollars in dome design. So I'd, I'm out that money anyway, um, so we'll have to, we'll have to cover that cost anyway. So, and I'm not trying to be a naysayer here, I'm just saying, these are the things I'm facing. So that's why I'm asking for some sense of, are we, are we heading in the right direction, or I don't think so.
The biggest homework thing that we brought up, John, would be the, the layout of the building with the parking lot, right?
So this is just a question of feasibility and cost, and if it's even possible, and where those things come back, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you were asking me if it was a standalone unit, would I be willing to do that for the economic benefit, the answer is probably yes. And I know that's a wishy-washy, it'd be probably yes, but if it's gonna be built together, and part of it is supposed to be a shared parking lot, then it ought to be as close to both facilities as possible, and that, I don't think that layout is, to be blunt.
So, so is it fair to tell Dr. Ash that, if possible, look at the possibility of, of?
It would make it, as I said before, it would make it a lot more.
Positioning the building in the parking lot?
It would make it a lot more.
If it's not possible, then, then, so. We can be made aware of that in the future.
Go ahead, go ahead, Doc.
One thing that was floated before, and I, I'm not here to sell this idea, I'm just, it had been, uh, conversed before, and it may, may play to your question, John, uh, this piece of property right here, according to Jason, is too small probably to really develop. And so he would, he would, was thinking that that could become part of the Recplex, and some additional soccer fields or softball fields right there, and now you have your parking along that side. Now, that's, that's perhaps down the road. I get, I get it, but, uh, that, that was the other, uh, part of the conversation that came into play as well, so.
So.
I definitely see the synergy with the, with the two entities working together. Um, we're kind of stagnated a little bit at what events we can bring into the Recplex now. Teams are going to places that can accommodate them, so by adding this other bubble facility, we would attract more teams, would be much more marketable and attractive to other teams, and I really see that as being of, of benefit to our community.
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and rack this up. Now, you said, you just said standalone, that.
No, I think it was a standalone, I, I, you know, then the parking doesn't matter, and then it's a matter, are you gonna get five hundred grand for it? But if it's gonna be built next to the Recplex, I think it ought to be designed in such manner that it looks like it's truly beneficial, and right there.
So that the parking would be down here?
Yeah, uh, to me, it, it's, that's, those far side ones, I guarantee you, knowing the way I, I am, I'm parking over here in this grass off the parking lot, cause it's closest to the entrance, entrance point of the Recplex, and so, and now if you have them across the street on the front side of the building, I think America would park there, but America typically doesn't walk that far to go do stuff. That's my point.
We're talking about athletes, John, though. They, they.
No, you're talking about their families.
This is, this is a, this is a true fact. The average soccer player runs eight miles in the duration of a soccer.
Yeah, but their parents don't.
They're not gonna mind that, John.
You're out of control, you're out of control. So, okay, let's, let's, let's bring this back to a, let's bring this back to a table. All right, do you feel comfortable moving forward with, you've got, you know, you know it rinkers down. Peanut butter is in. Now, his, his beef is the parking, but.
I'm, I'm close, but I'm not a hundred percent. I'm just gonna, I'm being.
I'm not picking it against it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I'm not barking against it, so I mean, you've got three strong, and me, I know it's gonna be good for the community. I'm just scared of that five hundred thousand dollars. I'm a little nervous about it. I'm not scared, I'm a little nervous. I, I think, I think you are more, I think you are more yeah than you are no. We're not just, we're not just shutting this down. I think everybody up here knows that this would be a good thing.
Well, that, that's helpful for me to know, and we can go back to the drawing board and see, here's their way to shift this to address parking and more shared.
Yeah, I think that's safe to say, yeah, I think that's.
Yep. If it, if it's, if it's not feasible, I will let you know.
Then we'll have to make a call.
Yeah, it is, it is what it is, if it's, if it can be done. And by the way, Eric, I meant that with most of my admiration as I had, cause I do, when I said my favorite, I do mean my favorite. So, just to clarify, it wasn't a bad. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've taken more of your time than, than we should, but thank you.
Sometimes we gotta do that. Thank you, Dr. Ash. Appreciate you. And thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we save the best for last.
We gotta take a break.
And.
Don won.
Don, before you, before you get started, I, I would tell you, I had a citizen call me the other day, and he went on and on about your department and how you helped him with the trash problems, so outstanding work there.
Jeremy?
They all left us.
They all, they all left at the same time?
Seriously, like, he was, the guy was really happy.
Yes, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Who's this? Okay, you all know me, I'm Don Fitting, I'm the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant with oversight responsibilities for the solid waste programs. First slide indicates that within the council's top five goals from an earlier session this year, they wanted to examine the TAG program, larger trash bins, and impact on nuisance slash community appearance. And that's what I'm gonna be talking about. Next slide. Uh, I made a presentation with my budget back in January of this calendar year, looking for some input about going to a sixty-five gallon trash can, and that would be for everybody. One size fits all, and, uh, basically do away with, uh, majority, if not all, of the TAG program, and, uh, out of that discussion, uh, we had some comments that were made to us. Uh, staff picked up the ball and decided to run with it, and they decided to put together a survey, insert it with the water bill, and send it out to our customers over a three-month period. Uh, the total surveys that were sent, as indicated, were seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine, and, uh, that was a combination of sent out in February. There was, uh, a mix-up in, uh, March, and none went out, and then they did mail the next group in April. Uh, so the total surveys approximately that were not sent was, uh, twen- two thousand eighteen, which is about twenty, twenty-one percent of our customers did not receive a survey and an opportunity to reply. Next slide. Question that was placed on the survey. Question that was placed on the survey, again, this was with the water bill, the city of Burlington is considering upgrading the solid waste collection system to allow for larger trash cans. Would you be willing to pay up to two dollars and twenty-five cents more per month on your trash bill in order to upgrade from a thirty-three gallon trash container to a wheeled sixty-five gallon trash container supplied by the city? And it went on to say that city staff believe that larger trash cans could reduce the amount of litter citywide. Next slide. So the total number of surveys returned as of May 2nd was two thousand six hundred and forty-two, which was a percentage returned of approximately thirty-five percent. I don't have a lot of experience in surveys the city sent out. Is that a fairly good number?
Yep, it's higher than we've gotten for anything else, probably.
Okay, so it did generate some interest, and people certainly wanted to reply to it. The replies represent though only twenty-eight percent of our total customers because we didn't send out those two thousand plus. And so you got to remember that there was a number that didn't receive the survey. So we're talking about the answers that are in the bottom half of that slide are representing what twenty-eight percent of our customers feel. Some of them are obviously a large number, approximately sixty-five percent of those who did receive the survey didn't take the opportunity to return them. What does that mean? I don't know. But on the surveys of return, we had one thousand forty-one yeses, or thirty-nine percent, and we had sixty-one percent said no, that they were not in favor of moving to a different program for one reason or another. And actually, that's a pretty good yes response because I kind of figured, I've made the comment to the council a number of times, that approximately eighty percent of our customers benefit by the tag program where they do not routinely use a tag, that they're able to stay within the thirty-three gallon container. They're allowed under the base fee that appears on the water bill. They don't have the tag to purchase. And so asking them to raise their rates to go to a sixty-five gallon can, I figured we might be much closer to eighty percent no and only twenty percent yes. Next slide. Okay, we had two hundred and sixty-three no votes, had unsolicited comments. There were not, was not a place intended to receive comments, but they sure wanted to take an opportunity to reply. And some of the comments were regarding, and some replies included multiple comments. The largest number of comments were, don't generate enough trash. In other words, they did not want the sixty-five gallon can because they're small-volume generators. We had some comment about recycling, some to the degree say that, well, I don't want to pay more money for people who are too lazy to recycle. If they recycle, they too could save money on buying a trash tag. Some people just said, we're already charging too much for our services, and this would be another problem. Some people said that carts are too bulky. We don't have space at our property for a large container. The maneuverability, a large container, it would be hard to move around. And we also had people say litter, you say that, you staff thinks that it will reduce the litter. We really questioned the benefits in reducing the amount of litter, and they just complained about litter in general. There's a lot of litter in the community. Next slide. We did have thirty return surveys, which were not included in the survey results. Why? One of them said, please put us down for ninety-one no votes from all of our residents at Sunrise West. Well, we didn't know of the surveys we returned, or that were returned. Some of them may very well have been from Sunrise West. We couldn't just, one person say, put down ninety-one no's.
That was from the spokesman of Sunrise West. He didn't leave his name. He didn't leave his name.
Okay, we had seven that were business replies. We had seven that said we use private hauler. We had thirteen that returned it, but that didn't mark yes or no. And we had two that said, well, we're outside the city limits, we don't use the service. So, next slide. I think this is a little bit hard to see, but what I have here are two pages that summarize some of the communities that we looked at. I've heard a couple of councilmen in the past praise the Davenport program, went up there, visited them, really, really liked it. The city of Davenport allows the choice of a cart, and you can get a thirty-five, you can get a sixty-five, you can get a ninety-five. If you have extra garbage beyond that, you use a bag and you put a four-dollar trash tag on it. That's how much it costs you for an extra trash bag in Davenport. It, trash in the cart must be bagged before it goes in the cart. It's not put in loose. I think that's the intent, to try to keep down, to keep the can clean, keep the odors down, keep the insects down. I don't know. I suspect maybe that Davenport at least has some of the routers collected by a fully-automated truck. You turn the container upside down. If it's loose material and it's really windy, there's a potential for material to fly. And so they do require that the material be bagged before it goes in the container, and they say yes, that the lid must be closed. And then they have a few other comments at the far right side. Musketeen, they too allow the use or choice of all three-size carts. But the interesting thing about them is they do not offer any tags or any extra garbage. And if you look at the right under comments, it says all carts are priced the same. They don't care. You can choose the cart you want, but everybody pays the same fee regardless of which size cart they have chosen. West Burlington, as you know, is just starting up their program or has just started it. They do allow selection size of cart, no thirty-fives. The base program was a ninety-five, and if you didn't want a ninety-five, you could step down to a sixty-five if you wanted to. They pick up twice in, I think, a four-month period throughout sandwiching the summer. They get two pickups per week. So they really, as a rule, probably don't have a lot of extra trash, and so it's not really addressed in their program or the information that we had. And, let's see, going to Fort Madison, they're just starting up. They too allow a choice, sixty-five, ninety-five, no thirty-fives. And if you have additional needs for extra garbage space, you can rent an additional container, whether it be a sixty-five or ninety-five, and that determines the price they pay. Again, the cart must have the lid closed, and they don't have any stickers for bags. It has to be in a cart. Next slide. The second slide, the second half are where communities that do not have a choice of size of container. Kioka has a ninety-five gallon cart. That's what you get, one size fits all. They don't require you to pre-bag their garbage, but the lid must be closed, and as it says, there's no refuse spilling over or placed on top or around the containers. It has to fit within that ninety-five. At Tamwa, they don't give a choice. It's a sixty-five gallon can. They have a one-dollar tag for extra garbage that would be in the bag. And again, they want their trash pre-bagged before it goes in the container. They want their lid closed. And finally, there's Cedar Rapids. They do not give a choice. Their whole program is a thirty-five gallon can, which I find amazing. But they do allow you, if you choose to do so, to get an additional cart for a fee. And they too want their garbage pre-bagged before it goes in the cart and sealed, and the lid must be closed. I did not include Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant has a program that is similar to ours in the sense that you can use bags, you can use thirty-three gallon cans. They have a very low base fee, somewhere around two or three dollars per month, and you have to have a tag on every single container. But I did not include them. Next slide. Okay, I wanted to make a point because I hear this a lot about how great a deal that West Burlington gets. And they do get, they do have a really good deal in West Burlington. But I wanted to let you know that you don't have a bad deal currently in Burlington, Iowa. If you look at this chart, you can see where West Burlington, for trash services, is paying twelve dollars a month. And in Burlington, if you break out the recycling fee, it's ten dollars and thirty-five cents a month. Now, for twelve dollars a month in West Burlington, you have a ninety-five gallon cart. And of course, it gets dumped twice a week during the warm weather months. Then they go to a single collection per week later on. And yes, in Burlington, you're limited to a thirty-three gallon container, and you have to put a required tag on any additional garbage. We both are paying three dollars and sixty-five cent for curbside collection of recyclables and plus to support the recycling program. Next slide. Okay, here are the other services associated with solid waste, or how we associate it. Leaf collection. They have four weeks in the spring, four weeks in the fall. They have an in-city drop-off location, and it's the street department who is paid from the general fund that collects their leaves in the spring and at the fall, at the curb. And they also have to maintain the city drop-off. In Burlington, it's a solid waste crew that picks it up. For that ten dollars and thirty-five cents, we provide seven, three weeks in the spring, seven weeks in the fall. And of course, if the citizen doesn't utilize that program, they can take their material to landfill. We do not have an inside-the-city-limits drop-off site. Not that you couldn't find one or if you want to run one, but there's not one currently in the city. Citywide cleanup. The street department, paid by the general fund in West Burlington, provides the citywide cleanup, which is what happened in the city of Burlington until about nineteen ninety-five, when it was put over on the solid waste department. Prior to that, the city basically shut down its street program, used its loaders, used its dump trucks, and picked up the citywide cleanup for several weeks to get the job done. Okay, that's what they have in West Burlington. We do a solid waste crews. Wood waste. In wood waste, the city of West Burlington has a drop-off for wood waste within the city limits. And who maintains that site? It's the street department who are paid from the general fund. In Burlington, we don't do anything with wood waste. What we say is you self-haul to the landfill. You show them that you're a trash pan customer, you pay into that fund, and in doing that, you don't have to get your wallet out and pay for it. It's paid for out of that ten dollars and thirty-five cents a month that we collect from our citizens, our customers. And finally, bulky items. If you have a bulky item in West Burlington, you're supposed to call the hauler yourself and make a special arrangements for them to come by and pick it, and he'll tell you how much money you need to pay them, and they do that. Whereas for garbage, in Burlington, we say, that couch requires three trash tags, put it out with your garbage on your garbage day, and we'll pick it up, and we take it away.
Who's picking it up?
My crew is picking it up.
I just wanted to get a clarification.
Yeah. So, yes, I think West Burlington does have a good program, but if you want to go back to the old days and have the public works people and the street department take care of citywide cleanup and leaves, I think we can probably reduce the leaf or the solid waste fee in Burlington. Okay? Next. All right. A couple of weeks ago, Charlie got up and spoke about nuisances, and he had a pie chart up there and so on and so forth. They started putting their data in a spreadsheet in July of 2017. So I asked Julie to look at what, we keep records too, and I said, look at January through June 2017. And you can see the properties that had trash-related nuisances that we reported to the nuisance department. We had forty-eight trash-related nuisances from January through June, and properties that were rentals, of those forty-eight, eleven of them were rentals. The reason I was interested in how many rentals are involved in nuisances is because I thought maybe, I don't know what the council's going to do with the program, but right now in our ordinance, it states that the property owner is required to supply a trash container for every rental unit, and currently it says thirty-three gallons. And I thought, well, if we find a large number or percentage of the nuisances is due to rentals, maybe the council would be, regardless of what program they were to adopt, maybe they would say, well, we're going to require owners of rental properties to provide a sixty-five gallon container, and maybe that would help reduce nuisances. But only eleven of the forty-eight were rental properties. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Okay, this is the pie chart basically that he provided to you a couple of weeks ago when he was talking about nuisances. The total number of nuisance complaints that they had in their database for July through December was seven hundred and seventeen nuisance complaints. I had Julie go through it, and of the seven hundred and seventeen, one hundred and forty-four were trash-related nuisances, or about twenty percent of the complaints that they dealt with during that second six-month period were trash-related. And then the trash-related nuisances, complaints that occurred at the rental properties, once again, I wanted to know how many rental properties were involved in that one hundred and forty-four. And in this case, there were fifty-six, or approximately thirty-nine, forty percent were trash-related.
I'm glad you got those numbers. Homeowners tear stuff up, too.
But if you look at the total number of rentals, that it really is a small percentage of the total number of rentals in the city. So some people would say, if you tell the owners of the rental properties, require them to provide something that's going to cost them more money than what it would now, they would say it's like hitting a fly with a meat tenderizer. You don't need to do that, it's unfair. All right? But numbers are what they are. Next slide. Okay, so if we do go to carts, if we do go to carts, there are some costs outside of just the cost of the carts that will cost the city. There's a seven thousand dollar one-time cost for the city logo template. I don't know if you've noticed the commercial container, well, on their container, they've got this rare Pacific company. They would take our city logo, make a template for seven thousand dollars, and then they'd stamp that city logo on every can that we purchase, that they manufacture for us. Eleven thousand five hundred is the cost of a survey. Why would we need a survey? We just did a water bill survey. Well, the survey that that's talking about is if you're going to offer different-sized carts to your customer, you're going to have to send out a brand-new survey. It's going to have to be unique to that address, and you're giving that address the choice of what size container they want, and they're going to have to send it back, and you have to have a mechanism, say, that returned survey came from that address. Someone else isn't filling it in and sending in multiple ones and messing things up. So it's eleven thousand five hundred dollars. We also have forty-five thousand dollars for contractor cart assembly and distribution. The carts do not come assembled. The city could do it with their own people and try to distribute them according to the survey. If you're doing it with different sizes, or if you're not doing, if a sixty-five gallon cart fits all, well, we just deliver the same cart to everybody. But they have a forty-five thousand approximate fee to take the carts, assemble it, and distribute it to the address that it belongs to, and they keep records. Each one has a social security, each one has a serial number on it, and there's an option for, at the very bottom, it says RFID. I think that's, I don't know if that's radio frequency ID or what that stands for, but you can fit these with microchips. And then they have readers on the truck. It would cost us thirty-eight thousand dollars to outfit five trucks only with the readers to read those chips. And some communities do that and some don't. Trash is really a big thing in some communities. You're talking about fifty-four thousand dollars to retrofit six fleet trucks with one tipper. I don't know how much time it's going to be in materials to implement and administer the program. And of course, the water department, if you go with multiple tiers of the program, they're going to have all these individual bills that they're going to have to enter the data individually based on the addresses and the information that are provided by us from the survey. Okay, next item. Okay, again, here's a repeat. Council goal, examine the tag program, larger trash bins, and the impact on the nuisance slash community appearance. Keep that in mind when we're looking at the next one. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to put four options out there, and we're looking for some guidance. The first one is the choice of any size cart, a thirty-five, a sixty-five, or a ninety-five. Same fee regardless of the cart size. That's the same thing they do in Musketeen. Musketeen requires that all trash must be in a sealed bag before it's placed inside the cart. The lid of the cart must be closed. It must not be overflowing with bags and bags of garbage, and there's not supposed to be any extra bags on the outside of the cart. And if you have routinely more garbage... any extra bags on the outside of the cart and if you have routinely more garbage than will fit in your garbage can, you can rent an extra cart. Okay, next slide. Option B, I'd say it'd be the same as option A, but you have tiered pricing based on the cart size. That's Davenport. Now, Davenport does allow you to have an extra garbage in a bag and you put a four-dollar trash tag on it. That's what they do. Our tags right now are two dollars, but there, if you have an extra bag of garbage, it's going to be four dollars. Next option. Option C, no choice of cart size at all. As I mentioned at the budget time, I thought sixty-five gallon only can would be a good choice, one size fits all. All trash must be in sealed bags and inside carts. Lid of the cart must be closed and extra, extra cart for extra garbage for a monthly fee and no extra bags outside of the cart. And again, the issue here is nuisances and I'm trying to say the wear and tear on my people's backs. Next option. Option D, that's the last one I've putting out there. Allow the choice of two white thirteen gallon kitchenette bags in lieu of choosing the cart and working within the option A, B or C. Put in extra garbage requires a thirty-five gallon cart for monthly fee, but I don't know, I, I really, I like the idea of bags. A number of people, we have elderly citizens, we have people who have very uneven ground, so will a can stand up? I think that there are people out there that use bags because A, they want to make one round trip, they don't want to make two and retrieve an empty container later. They maybe have handicap or something like that, that they can't carry a can, but they can drag a bag or put it in their vehicle and drop it out there at the curb, out of their trunk of their car. Or you could have somebody who has very, very uneven ground and there's no place to set the can except in the travel lane, whether it be in the alley or whether it be, I mean, there's, there's alleys that have retaining walls and people want to put their garbage can from their, walk through the back of the house and set it on top of the wall and they want the guy to reach up and pull a can full of garbage off. Well, that's really good on his back and shoulders too. So I don't like the idea of bags. I've asked my guys, "How many households do we have you think that use bags?" And they said somewhere they thought between ten and fifteen percent. And I'm sure many of them are used like in retirement, community areas, developments and so on and so forth. So I don't like the idea of bags, but it would, I'm sure, make some of our customers very happy to retain that choice.
Don, if, if they chose that, would they pay a fee for it? Would they pay any, see any increase in, in what they pay for?
Oh, that would be a decision that the council would make, I guess. We would make a recommendation. I'm kind of looking at guidance, which one you're looking at.
I thought one of the reasons we wanted to get away from the bags is the animals get in them and drag the garbage around. So I can see Don's point, we want to get, we want to not encourage them to do the bags, but I might be wrong in that.
Something that I had mentioned to Don when he was talking about this as an option, one, in thinking about from the nuisance perspective, you're, you're trying to create a reason to get it trapped into a, a container that will keep from having nuisances spread. And you have other people though that want this for the ease and flexibility of doing it. I, I would, from a nuisance perspective, I would suggest that you don't have a cheaper price for using two bags because you're trying to incentivize those who are trying to keep from avoiding a cost and will go the cheapest route, store garbage on their
I agree.
back porch or whatever and, and have garbage that's out at the side that, or out the street that gets spread everywhere.
Well, I would.
But yeah, I mean, you have other folks who are very conscientious and that is something they're doing from a, for a very practical reason that.
I would just like to see as many people, if we're going to do this, as many people use the, use the garbage cans as possible just because, you know, the workers comp claims that we're getting from, from those guys hauling trash, I just think, we need to try to get away from that as much as possible.
Real quick, for, sorry Matt, I think the people that didn't get the surveys, I think they all probably called one of us.
Good.
To be honest with you, I, I did not have anybody complain about cost. I did have the elderly complained about the bigger can, whether they could move it, although my mother's seventy-plus, sorry mom, but she moves, she moves a sixty-five gallon can all the time, how, albeit it's on a flat surface. I like program A because for the people that have bad alleys and stuff, they could use the smaller can if they're worried about trash, because what we heard, what I heard was, "Don't generate enough trash" and moving, moving the thing around. Those were the two complaints. I didn't hear any complaints about cost, but, but to me, trying to do a tiered program creates a lot of extra work for you as well.
I agree.
Right. So to me, I like the, I like your, what you laid out, I like pro, I'm going to just put it out there, I like, I like A right off the bat.
I like A too, so.
I guess for me, I, well, I guess if it's the same fee for no matter the cart size, then yeah, I guess, I was thinking ease of access or you know, ease of the billing and things like that, you know, we don't want to put any more complications on, you know, the people handling that. So I guess C or A for me.
I have a question for you, Don.
Yep.
I did have a lot of elderly people and disabled people approach me. If it is as low as you say at ten percent, would it be problematic to allow a few people to continue with the bag? Some people have leg cast problems, arthritic problems.
Yeah, I know.
You know, they do have to drive, like you said, the garbage and lift it out of their car and, I have a disabled mom, I'm sticking up for you mom. I just want to know what, would that be really problematic for that small amount of people? And then eventually, as they realize the can wasn't as cumbersome maybe as they thought or their situation changed, they could embrace it. I don't know.
Well, I'd, I'd make two comments. One is that virtually, most of the people I, most of the communities that I put up on the screen, they do not allow, I mean, you, your, your primary is a container. You're not putting out bags. You're not putting out bags unless you have filled up your container.
Nick's laughing, he's usually the one that breaks the microphone.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that live in those communities and many, many of those communities have more people. So it's not, I mean, I'm sure there's similar situations in those communities and yet the program runs that way. The second thing that have, have hesitancy about bags being used at all is if we were ultimately, which I have reserved hopes that we may be able to successfully have a hybrid program where we also, we have some of our houses, some of our residents are served by a fully automated truck. And if you're allowing bags to be used, you're going to have to, at that time, make that change and say, "No more bags." Now, when will that be? I don't know. I would say we're probably a couple of years out from that, at least. In the meantime, we'll be doing the semi-automated, which bags can work in a semi-automated, but as I said, I kind of go back and forth. They say you can hurt your back bending over to pick up a piece of paper, we're going to be picking up these smaller bags. There are white bags that are twenty gallon bags, so we're going to have people that are going to be trying to use bigger bags than what they're supposed to. And it's just going to be a constant battle. I like A because, well, number one, to my surprise, the city manager is the one that suggested that to me as an option when I spoke with him last Friday. I was taken aback and I didn't think, I thought, "I cannot believe this." But I started af- after leaving, after leaving, I remembered that several years ago I had made a presentation to a council and I was trying to get rid of the tag program because it makes policemen of the crews and I, at that time, said, "Let's get rid of the tag program and just charge everybody the same fee, whether you set out one can or whether you set out three cans." It should reduce the number of nuisances because people don't have to hoard it in their garage, they don't have to hoard it in their, on their back porch. And I thought, "Well, that's no different than what he's suggesting" and then it kind of made sense. Hard to believe, but I, I kind of agree. I kind of agree.
I hardly believed it.
And then looking at the chart, musketeen is doing that.
Hey, Don, the, the tippers, you said we have to install one tipper on the trucks. Does that one tipper, will it handle all three sizes of cans?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't.
That's why, that's why the thirty-five is so tall and center of gravity is high. I don't, really don't like the thirty-fives. I'd like to eliminate, not even have the thirty-fives, but I realize that there's a lot of low-volume generators, there's people worried about trying to move the big can, there's finding the space to put the thirty-five, I mean, a sixty-five or a ninety-five, so I understand it, but I, I don't like the thirty-five, but it's, it's got a high center of gravity. Did you not say at one time that in a community you lived, they had thirty-fives and they actually went and replaced them because they were having so many issues with the thirty-five? I would say it's susceptible to tipping over, especially it's on uneven ground. If the wind blows it, I can see it tipping over. It's lighter, so it's potentially going to be blowing into traffic just as a standard can will. So, and I think that if we were doing B, which was a tiered program and they could save money by staying at the thirty-five, they're going to cram that thing really, really full and it's not going to want to empty. You can put a pizza box in there and cause bridge and the guy's going to be spending all his time shaking it, shaking it, trying to get it out of there. And I'm really concerned, I, I, I think that we can get everything, but doing a semi-auto like, semi-automated collection is not a real fast process. I mean, versus going over and picking up a bag and throwing it in and going on your way, now you've got to pull the cart over there, put it there, pull the lever, let it tip, bring the cart back, take the cart, push it back. That's a lot more time than it takes just to grab a bag and toss it.
I've talked to some other, I've talked to some other communities that are doing it. Actually, that's not true, I talked to a trash company that's, that's doing it, waste company and they said that there's a community that they go to that's not close, that's not far from here and they knock it out. They said it's, actually saves them time, that's.
Semi-automated or fully automated?
Well, they're fully automated, but some of them.
Well, there's a big difference between a fully automated collection and semi-automated. Of course, the customers have to do what they're supposed to do for fully automated to work. If the guy's got to get out of the truck to move the can, put it in a place for the arm, you've just lost all the efficiency.
But again, this is some full, fully automated, some semi-automated.
It's a, it's a hybrid game thing and I think that that's possible. The other thing I like about the larger carts and I think that number one, the council in its wisdom, over my objections years ago, said, "It's okay to use garbage can for putting leaves in and we'll have the leaves collected the day after your garbage is collected. That way your garbage can is empty and you can put your leaves in and save the money from buying a bag." Well, if those, if our trucks have tippers and people put leaves in there, then my guys are not lifting at least that quantity of leaves and throwing the truck. The second thing I like about it is even if you don't need as much space as what you have, you can throw small stuff away. There are many communities that citywide cleanup program is a bulky item program. If it's small enough to fit in your can, you're supposed to be putting in your can and you can do that year-round. You don't have to have that spring cleaning mentality and it would help reduce the amount of stuff that we handle. Now, the truth of the matter is though, is ultimately our tonnage that we're paying for, that currently goes in under the community project fund at the landfill, may see that get used less and more garbage go there and our tonnage might go up.
Yeah, that's my concern, Don, is that if we go to the larger can, environmentalist in me screams, "No, no, we'll reduce recycling and we'll contribute to more landfill mass." So I do like the idea of giving them the option of cart size, but I do like the idea of a little bit more payment to compensate for that, although I've been told it's a philosophy for recycling, you're either going to do it or you're not, but.
You have been slipping plastic and glass in for years.
I don't like the idea of the smaller household items going in with the trash when they could be set alongside the curb and somebody that sees a reuse for that item can grab it and keep it out of the landfill.
Scavenging can be very entertaining.
My neighbor.
Also see.
Can be very messy.
Yes, we received a lot of complaints from citizens who say, "I had all my stuff boxed, I had all my stuff bagged and you came by and you didn't pick any of it up and it was because a scavenger went through, they tore through all the materials, scattered it all over."
I know, it's not without a problem.
So that brings up, brings me to the question that I've got for you and this is, this doesn't pertain to these cans, but it pertains to solid waste in general. I was in Dubuque last week, meeting with a client and I showed up at their house and out in front of their home is a lot of this trash. It wasn't spring cleanup, they don't have spring cleanup. What they have is a program, much, and Davenport has the same program. If you haul a bunch of stuff to the curb, as long as it's boxed or bagged or even bulk items, you call the city and for a twenty-dollar fee, they will come clear everything on the curb from one side to another. Now, if you, you can fill that curb up, but then it's twenty dollars every time that they come back. Would it make sense for us to move more towards programs like that so that we reduce the costs associated with the scavenging that takes place during spring cleanup? And would that have any impact on the bills that people are paying now? For example, if we removed the fall and spring cleanup, would we see a decrease in that and then the actual cost of that would be carried on to the people that are using it?
Well, number one, we have just one citywide cleanup in the spring only.
Okay, in the spring.
We used to have two. I, I don't know. I mean, there's been discussions about that. We've seen, as you say, if you go to a website for a community, some people have a program where they make an appointment to have a bunch of stuff picked up and they prepay at city hall to have that item, that, that material picked up. And I've not visited any community where they're doing that or observed it. I don't know how it works and I don't know how they feel about it.
The only two that I'm aware of that I know that do it is Davenport. They charge ten dollars and then, like I said, I was in Dubuque last week for my client and got to, we, I knew this conversation was coming up and we got off on a tangent and spoke to her and she said, "Yeah, it's twenty bucks." And she just called city hall and paid with a credit card and they came and picked it up the next day. So I don't know if that's something that we would want to look forward or look into as well.
It might have some merit in reduced nuisances, I don't know.
But if we're talking about trying to improve nuisance issues, talking about the costs associated with the scavenging that takes place and removing those bulk items, that might be a more efficient way of doing it.
I, I'll be honest with you, I, I, I don't do spring cleanup because it's, I can go to the dump and I don't have to go pick up my yard afterwards and so I don't do spring cleanup. I, I go out to the dump and if I've got something to, to, to get rid of, that's the way I do it because invariably, every time I've tried to do the spring cleanup, even though the city guys do what they can to pick it up, there's stuff there.
And that, and that's where this type of program would probably improve that situation.
But I do spring cleanup and yeah, people go through and leave stuff on the sidewalk, but for what it gives to me, it's worth going out there and grabbing back where the scavengers came in.
It's fun to see what they're going to take first, isn't it?
Cutting the cords off of your.
Where we, where we at guys? Are you guys?
I like option A.
Hey.
Yeah, I mean, I like A, but I also.
I like A, but I do like the option of the higher fee for getting a, a larger container. I think the environmentalist in me says, "They might encourage recycling." On the other hand, it might encourage smashing things down like you said.
Pinch peanut butter, please. Pinch it really hard, please.
The, I think that it will take somewhere in talking to the sales rep with all the things that need to be done, it probably will be somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five months before we actually would be able to implement it. And there'll have to be a change to the ordinance because it's, so there's language in the ordinance that has to be addressed and do that.
Well, and to the small can, I think the negative externalities associated with that small can are going to be pretty recognizable once the plan's implemented, so that's why I'm not a giant fan of.
I think, I think now that we've had a serious conversation about it and everybody seems to be kind of serious up here, I'd like to see what, I'd like to see what feedback I'm going to get from, from citizens now that, that they see where it's moving in a serious direction. But, no, I, I like what you're bringing or what Jim brought or whatever you guys worked together or however that worked out.
No, I, I, I think, I think having the option, at least the option for the elderly and the people that are worried about they don't generate enough trash, okay, fine, there's the smaller can for you, it's going to be the same, same fee as the big can. I mean, I have not a current neighbor, but I had a neighbor before that had a family of five and I'm telling you, he was, he had three containers and he still had bags on top of them, you know?
Dude, I told you you weren't supposed to bring that.
I know, sorry. And then, and I'll be, I'll be, I was a, a sinner because I had a trash compactor and let me tell you, I put a lot of trash in a thirty-three gallon can that I could hardly have.
One, one other, one other advantage to having a can larger than what you need is that when it have inclement weather, if your can's not full, you have space for another week's worth of trash. You don't have to go out when it's icy, you don't have to go out there with snow, you don't have to go out there when it's raining like cats and dogs or you can save that space and use it and take it out the following.
I know this isn't going to apply to a lot of people, but I just think about the amount of stuff that I have left after Christmas, or if we have kids' birthday parties, like we're holding trash in the garage until you guys pick up the three cans that are already full, so that I have room to put more trash. So I think this helps with a lot of those issues. Like I said, a lot of people aren't going to have those issues.
That A does not allow extra trash in bags or anything like that. It's, it's a program that if you are a regular generator of extra trash, you're going to have to rent a second container.
From the city, so for example,
Right.
if it's X number of dollars for a large container, and I decide I need two of those, then I can pay an additional fee and get another one of those containers.
That's right.
I think that's sweet. And I'll tell you another thing too. I saw a guy, a kid the other day, and I've never done this, but I saw a kid the other day, and I'm serious, he was, and this, this is going to be bad, but they were trying to get trash in, and, you know, the mom helped the kid up, and it, he's, you know, buried down, you know, and that's just not good. And so the bigger trash cans, that's going to help out a lot.
But if the trash is pre-bagged and the bag is sealed, that adds kind of like a slick feature to what's in the container, it'll come out easier. If it's loose material and you're packing it in,
Okay.
there's no guarantees.
Keep it greasy, it'll go down easy.
One last question for you, Don. So if somebody wants to switch cart sizes, will there be a fee associated? I think Davenport, because there's a lot of paperwork, administrative work behind all this.
That's right, yeah. I hate to even think about that. I mean, I hate to think
Yeah, Davenport had to add a fee for that.
But there, yeah, there's, typically, most programs have a fee if you're going to upgrade or downsize after so much time. People really need to think seriously. If it's the same cost and you've got space for a larger container, I would recommend going with the larger container.
Is there still a fee if they're transitioning into that home? So for example, if me and my wife moved to a new home and that home had a smaller cart and we need a larger one, would we still have those fees?
No, I don't believe so. I think we would treat you as a new member of our community and the benefit of the doubt and make that change at no cost to you.
Looks like we're starting to lose the audience.
Probably need to look at what other communities that are doing similar, similar programs are doing for those charges.
That's right. Thank you. So we're good?
Good. Thank you so much for all this.
Fantastic, Don. Hey, last on the agenda, is appointments, anybody got problems with that?
Nope.
Okay, we're good to go? Andy?
Yeah.
Say it.
I moved that we
Yes, ma'am.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
I'll be gone next week.
Where are you going to be?
DC trip, the chambers.
I noticed how you